All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Like to call the order, the April thirteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees at seven oh two P M. Are you in vocation? Father, we come to you this evening to do the business of the people of Northfield Township. We ask that you guide us in making our decisions, that those decisions honor you and are those that are in the best interests of our community. Yes, you bless us and care for us. Amen.
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 Next is the pledge. Why me and pledge allegiance here? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the role. Miss Manley, will you call the role, please?
Yep, Nelson.
Joshua Nelson, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan, present.
Chick.
Danachick, President, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan.
Moko.
Namoko, present, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan.
Otto.
Jackie Otto, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan, present.
Zelenak.
President, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan.
Manley, present, Northfield Township, Michigan, Washington County. Dignan.
Present, Northfield Township, Washington County, Michigan.
Seven zero, all here.
Okay, very much. We do have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the minutes from the March twenty third, twenty twenty one, regular meeting. You should have those in your packet. Are there any corrections beyond those that were forwarded earlier on? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion?
A motion to approve.
Okay, it's a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty third meeting of the regular, regular meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees.
I'll support.
Support.
Okay, motion by Moko, supported by Chick. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Zelenak?
That'll include any changes submitted. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the role, please?
Yep, Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick, yes. Moko.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Okay, passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the minutes from the March thirtieth special meeting of the Board of, of the Board of Trustees. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March thirtieth meeting.
I'll support.
So motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the role?
Manley, yes. Chick, yes. Nelson. Zelenak.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Okay, seven zero.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like pulled out of the consent agenda? Yes.
Yeah. Who did you say, Ms. Mr. Dignan? Yes, I'd like to pull out the Northfield Township Fire Department report, please.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Otto, anything?
No, I was gonna request the same.
Okay, all right. I mean, now I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley, will you call the role?
Yep, Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Nelson. Okay, I heard he asked.
He said, yes, but it was muted. I still can't, Josh.
Yes.
There we go.
Manley, yes. Chick, yes. Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Fire department report pulled out. Where would you like to place that on the agenda? Want to place that as our first item of old business?
Sure, that'll work.
Mm-hmm.
I do want to make one real quick comment in regards to the, the, the bills that were paid. I did, you know, notice as I was driving down Main Street every evening that the lights on the senior center are kept on at eleven o'clock at night, midnight, one A M., three A M., four A M., and so on. And I, I'm gonna try to bring it up with D T E, but I don't think we need to keep those secondary parking lot lights on and be paying the electricity for those lights after eleven P M. If the senior center uses it after that, I mean, maybe we don't need to be paying for it after ten P M. I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna work with the community center director and see if we can get that adjusted or, you know, figure something out because it seems like that's a lot of wasted electricity that our tax dollars are going towards. So I just happened to notice that when I looked at the streetlight bills that we pay and I know the electric is, you know, if we can cut it. So anyway, the only, I don't have anything else to the agenda that would like to be changed. Is there anyone else that would, has any changes to the agenda other than the adding the, the fire department report? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the balance of the agenda as amended.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the role?
Yep, Otto.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Nelson. Seven zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda is petitions and communications. This is a time on the board's agenda that the public may address the board on items limited to those that are on the agenda this evening. There will be a time later in the meeting to address items that are not on the agenda, but if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board at this time about any items that are on our agenda, you may do so by raising your hand. If you raise your hand, we will call on you. Okay, have Mr. Barron, go ahead. You, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Dignan. My name is Richard Barron. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Foley, Barron, Metzger, and Yip. We're at three triple seven Six Mile Road in Livonia. I'm appearing again on behalf of Northern Trellis with others to provide a further update on our site. Also appearing are John Carlson for the property owner group, Brian Kirschbaum, our local partner, to talk about community outreach plans, Brad Parlato, our engineer from Tri Media Environmental Engineering, and Trent McCurren and Rob McCurren, the C E O representing additional leadership with the company. And I'll note that Trent has been the point of contact for the most part with the township and the township's consultant, but others on the call are content leaders. And I'd further note that while we're on the agenda, we're not, we don't have an agenda item for dialogue with the board. So I recognize that some of this may be up to the board's discretion in terms of how you would like to hear from us. So I'll, I'll lay out my comments and then I'll offer a suggestion to try and keep this organized. And I do not intend to use all three minutes just to put everyone at ease.
Okay, Mr. Barron.
Yes, sir. So we learned just kind of by happenstance the other day that, that this particular site was on the agenda for the board meeting. And that was a big surprise because since Brian Kirschbaum and I were in front of this board on March twenty third to update the board on the progress, the site plan, challenges with the county and the various commissions for traffic and for water, we thought from the supervisor's comments that there would be some further outreach to a Northern Trellis to get some further update on the site, but no one from Northern Trellis got any further, you know, comments or any further inquiry on behalf of the board. Before that, in March, Trent McCurren sent a detailed outline to Mary Bird at the township and Julie Canoccia at McKenna detailing the progress. And I would note that the indication in the board's packet at page one fifty five that the applicant, Northern Trellis, is still working with the Water Resources Commission and Road Commission to resolve outstanding issues doesn't even scratch the surface to indicate the amount of work that's gone on by the group to try and get county agencies' information for review and approval. I, I would really note here that if this was an easy site to develop, considering all the property in the township in that location, someone probably would have done it by now. I, I would also add that the, the board's packet indicates that the board's waiting on the community benefits agreement from the attorney. And per my conversations and communications with Township Attorney Mariah Fink, I thought that that was all handled as of November eighteenth, twenty twenty, where it just needed to be submitted by her office to the planning commission. So from our perspective, that's all done. But I don't know where it goes from there.
Mr. Barron, you have thirty seconds, please.
And I'm pretty much done. I would request, Mr. Dignan, that John Carlson be recognized next. He is at another township meeting. But if he's available, followed by Brad Parlato, the engineer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Barron. Next is Mr. Carlson. Mr. Carlson, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, John Carlson, Sio Township, Washington County. Try to be as brief as possible. I'm up north where I'm originally from. I'm at a peninsula township meeting, but they let me pop out in the car here. I'm only on the real estate side. We do historic and property development throughout Michigan. And this site has been a challenge, but we've had some really good outreach with our neighbors upon learning, working with Washington County on getting approvals. We've learned that it would make it easier and make the intersection better by working with the neighbors and combining parcels. So we now have a verbal agreement that we're drafting to bring the corner parcel, which is on the west side of the property, into the project for future development. So we'd eliminate two more curb cuts there. And then we actually have a, another parcel that's part of this property. If you can picture it on the east side, right when you get off the highway, so the gas station is actually in between our two parcels with a little strip of land behind them. The gas station now, we've met with that neighbor, really a wonderful guy, and are working on additional consolidation of curb cuts so that we can just make the intersection safer. Washington County, I think, is, is the one that's taking the longest at this point as far as traffic studies. They can't just pull a, a traffic report on how many people turn in and out of a Starbucks where they could get national data. With this industry being new, we've had to pay for additional traffic studies here and at other locations around the state so that they could have more data. And that has been submitted to Washington County. So we feel comfortable on the land side that we've been working. I know others are gonna point to stormwater retention. We've had some good discussions with Eagle. There's some contamination on our east parcel that we'll be working on. And we just, it's taken time because it is a challenging site, but we feel really good about working together as a group here with these different owners, combining some ownership so that we have a, a better and safer piece of property for the township. I'm happy to answer any questions if it gets to that point, but we have been working. It's a difficult site and we're really just waiting on approvals. I know they have applied for signage. We, we are required to remove signs from that site, put up conforming signs. And I believe that's been submitted. And we have been the owner of the property since January twenty seventh.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next item, our next individual is let's see, Travis. Let's see here. Travis Copen. I ought to talk Travis. Nope, hang on. You there, Travis?
I am, sorry, muted out, but don't worry about the last name. Everyone butchered it. It's Travis Copenaver. I am attorney from Copenaver P L L C, Ann Arbor, Michigan. I'll take ten seconds. I, I'm here on behalf of the Green Guys Group. Its address is ninety-five forty-five Main Street or ninety-five fifty-one Main Street. They will answer any questions. We did email our progress and our expected timeline. You know, for what it's worth, we, we just need a, a little bit more time. There were some delays getting permits approved and things, but we are on track to be done. It's just unfortunate I couldn't get done in those one hundred and eighty days. So to do the extent that we could request a small extension to give us time to finalize, that's, we'd love to have it. And if you have any questions about our site when that agenda item comes up, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Travis. Okay, next individual is Brad Parlato. Are you there, Brad?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. So as Rich previously stated, I am the professional engineer on the Northern Trellis project, and I'd like to update you to some of our progress and challenges we've been having from a design standpoint. I'm sure as the township knows, um, design requirements are, are put in place to, to hold stormwater on a site to a certain limit. When we, when we prepared our original design, we acknowledged that there would be challenges on the site, but we did make some engineering judgment that there would be some level of infiltration possible. We designed an underground storage system. Not a conventional system, but it fit the bill at the time. When we performed a geotechnical evaluation, we retained a professional engineer, geotechnical engineer out of Ann Arbor. We found almost exponentially the opposite of some of our engineering assumptions. The site does not have infiltration. In fact, very poor infiltration. So we had to do a, a one eighty, if you will. Because now we have a significant amount of stormwater that this site has to hold. This site is on a ten percent slope, which is not conventional. Relatively easy site, is flat and sandy, and, and you can hold that water. This site is the exact opposite of that. So it's not the end of the world, but it does make it challenging. We've looked at many practices, including permeable pavers. As John mentioned, we're looking at, you know, maybe looking to the east, which is contaminated, which brings another level of excavation and stormwater issues. Not the end of the world, but it does take time and careful consideration to come up with a safe design. So also, we're, as John mentioned as well, we, we're kind of waiting on the, the site entrance. We don't have that permit yet from Road Commission. But that will dictate exactly our final stormwater design. We've been working with the Water Resources Commission. Teresa Marsick's been very helpful. You know, we, we've, we've sent concepts and iterations by her for, for her help. So it's, it's been a, it's been a busy process. We're just not quite there yet. I just wanted to explain that to you. So thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. All right, next is Brian. Go ahead, Brian. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Hi, my name is Brian Kirschbaum. I live at ten eighty-one St. Andrews Drive here in One More Lake. So I'm excited to be part of this. I live a couple miles away from Northern Trellis and love the community, raising kids here. My wife and I have been here for seven years now and very excited to provide community outreach. But as Rich, Trent in the past and now Brad has said too, there's been a lot of delays behind the scenes with the county water and road commissions. Once the approvals are in, we'll know our approach for the community outreach and the direction that we'd like to go for all this, but we just want to give an update about what's been going on. And I know that Trent's been emailing Mary Bird and working with Paul Lippens in the past, but beyond that, is there any sort of other contact that we, meaning Trent and I, should start reaching out to or to provide more updates? Or is, what, what direction would you like us to go moving forward?
Okay, Brian, we'll address that later part of the meeting.
Sure. Thank you.
You also, okay. All right. Next. Next is Mr. Adam Only. Mr. Only, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, Adam Only, nine three one five, Lakewood Court. I'm not sure what changes were made to the minutes because they weren't brought up in the meeting. So not that it's normal for public members to mention meeting correction, minute corrections, but I came upon one from March twenty third meeting. At the seventeen thirty-eight mark of that meeting, Supervisor Dignan said, the applicants for the businesses in Northfield, or the applicants for the cannabis businesses in Northfield Township will be getting a communication from our planner in regards to the hundred and eighty day timeframe that is coming due, and that letter will indicate some information in regards to just asking for status. When you look at the minutes for that meeting, the, under correspondence, it says, Dignan noted the township will be sending a hundred and eighty day notice regarding the R T M C Enterprise project due to lack of progress. Those aren't even close to the same thing. So I don't know how that got messed up in the minutes. But if it wasn't brought up by another board member for changing that in the minutes, I, I definitely think it should be. Also, based on that comment by Supervisor Dignan at the last meeting at the seventeen thirty-eight mark, I'm very disappointed to hear that these businesses weren't contacted by our planner, by our supervisor, by our township board. As they, as Northern Trellis just mentioned, they had no communication that they were on the agenda tonight until yesterday when someone contacted them. That's not part of the township. It's, it's really frustrating when now it's being put on them for this hundred and eighty day hurdle that's kind of out of their control. But as a board or as a township, we're also not doing our part to reach out to them. There was an update from Northern Trellis, as they mentioned at the last meeting. It's disappointing that that's how a potential business is being handled by our board or by our township. I, I hope that the, I hope that the township board makes the decision to extend these three. I, I think the rescinding of a license at this time would definitely be costly on the township's end. And due to the fact that none of them have met all of the requirements of the hundred and eighty days, if you're not gonna rescind them all, then I would recommend you extend them all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Richard McMullen. Go ahead, Mr. McMullen. McCullen? I'm sorry, did I get that completely wrong? Robert, here we go.
Yes, hello.
Hi, sorry about that. Wow.
Oh, no problem.
Go ahead.
Robert McCurren, I think I'm the last one speaking from our group. I'm the C E O and founder, co-founder of Northern Trellis, the Wellflower Group. We're a vertically integrated cannabis company and we've, we've got operations that are up and running in locations around the state. But to be honest, our, our location in Northfield Township is, is, we think we're gonna be one of our flagship stores. We made a huge investment in this site and in this, in this community going, you know, getting to this point to get this opportunity. And we've closed on the property. We've got a very professional and outstanding group at all levels of this project, which I hope you've seen a little bit of on, on the call tonight to reassure you of, of the efforts that we're making to try to move this project along and our commitment to ensuring that it happens as fast as, as, as really humanly possible. I, I've many people in our group, our investment group, property owner at all levels are, are experienced doing complicated and challenging build outs and commercial projects. Cannabis company and outside of that. And and, and I just want to make it clear that we're doing everything we possibly can to move this project along. No one wants it moving forward more than I do. I'll promise you that. And, and we are committing all resources that we possibly can to ensuring that we get it going as quick as possible. One thing that wasn't said by the previous commenters was that we've, we've engaged the general contractor. He's been to the site. He's ready to go. The plans are all complete. And he works hard and fast. So as soon as we get through this very painful process to be able to break ground and get the thing going, you're gonna see rapid progress and any concerns about, you know, the project coming to completion quickly, I think will be, will, will go away. So with that, we've taken up enough of your time. I appreciate all of your time in considering this issue. I'm sorry, there was some sort of a communication issue, I assume, related to, you know, the lack of notice, but we understand these things happen and we're here to be a good partner and to move this project along. And we just request an appropriate extension to be able to, to do what is humanly, you know, possible in, in the age of COVID with, with all the challenges we're facing and really any project at this point. So thank you for your time. And I also, of course, am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, next individual. Mr. Roydis, go right ahead. You have three minutes. Mr. Roydis, are you there? We cannot hear you. Let's see.
You need to unmute.
Oh. Now, you need to unmute yourself. Try it again. Try it one more time, Mr. Roydis. Your device says that it is muted.
I can't.
There you go. You're on on two devices. You need to mute one of them. Turn it down now. I'm sorry. I joined late.
We'll get that straightened out now. Is this a discussion about the plans development?
Nope. Not on the agenda this evening. Are you there? Mr. Roydis, we cannot hear you.
Sorry, Dan.
Having some technical difficulties. It sounded like Mr. Roydis was asking in regards to the P U D that the planning commission had put forth, and that is not on the agenda this evening. That will be on the agenda at our next board meeting. And we welcome any public comments on that at the end of this meeting at the second call to the public. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board this evening on items that are on the agenda? If there are, would you raise your hand, please? Okay. Just a moment. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Gordon, go ahead, please.
Hi, David Gordon, Helena Road. I didn't, I wasn't aware that the call to the public had been changed.
It did not change, Mr. Gordon. It has been this way since I call to the public has not changed. It's been this way since I got elected. Well, on the agenda tonight is the report from the planning, from the Janet Chick on the Planning Commission report. And I'd like to make a request that the board does more than it has so far to inform the public about the largest rezoning in a generation.
in a generation that was in front of the Planning Commission on the seventh. The minimum legal notice has been sent out. Half dozen letters to the people that live nearby. A legal notice was in the paper. And a sign was put up at the site. But there's been nothing on the township website in terms of any news stories. There's been nothing in the township newsletter informing the public of this huge project, which will have an impact on the entire township. And I would urge the Board of Trustees to send a letter to the taxpayers in this township who be, who will be impacted by this development to inform them that this is happening immediately because the PUD, as you said, was approved by the Planning Commission on the seventh with conditions. And there were a lot of conditions. But it, it doesn't seem to me that that the public even knows that this is going on. I don't know that you have any idea of how well or poorly you're noticing is actually affecting or, or impacting the public. I would suspect there's less than five percent of the people in this community know that this is happening. And I know that you all ran on a ticket of transparency and connecting with.
Regarding you, one minute.
Right, I know. I got my little watch going over here. So I would hope that, that you guys would spend a little money and invest a little money on informing the public of something this, this, of this magnitude. It's, I don't expect the board to be spending money to go out on every little thing to inform the, the public. But on something this large, you would think that at least it would be on the township website. Or in the newsletters. But I think something this big needs even more effort on your part. It only costs a couple of grand to send a letter to every taxpayer in this community. And I would urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next member of the board is Karen Alexa. Sorry about that, guys. Fix that. Give me one moment. Ms. Alexa, go ahead.
All right. So yeah, I'd like to, I agree with David Gordon.
Ms. Alexa, we're not addressing this issue today at this call to the public. You're welcome to address it at the second call to the public. This is not an item that is on the agenda. The call to the public at the beginning of the meeting is to address items that are on the agenda. If you'd like to address this issue, you're welcome to do so at the second call to the public.
Okay, can I address the fact of the Northern Trellis that is going up on the corner of?
More than welcome to, sure.
Territorial and Whitmore, Whitmore Lake Road. So, you know, I want to make sure that this, I, you know, I, I am pro-development. But I'm also, you know, notify, notifying the citizens of what's going on is very important. I don't remember seeing any notice on that corner that that development was happening. And also, I want to make sure that they pitch in their fair share for sewers. For that sewer system that went in on Nor Territorial that we're all paying for, that I think we're trying to get tax money to help cover the cost of right now, which is what's pushing some of the development. Also, you know, just a side note, the Chestnut Development sign that they have, that's right across the street from me. That sign has blown off three days ago. So there is no sign posted and has not been for at least three days. And I'll wait until the second call to the public to discuss some of my concerns with Chestnut Development.
Thank you very much. Next member of the public is Deborah Buzzy. Deborah, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
We can hear you as well. You have three minutes, please.
I know I do. After listening to the last conversation, I'll wait for the second call to the public. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much. Next item, next member is David Perry. Hold on just a moment, Mr. Perry.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening, Mr. Perry. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Long time no see. I'd like to make some statements regarding development projects in general. We've got one on the agenda tonight. I'd like to echo the voices of those who are saying that we'd like to have more transparency from the board and the Planning Commission on these things. I know it's easy when you're, you do what you do, okay? You're all very familiar with these meetings and what goes on in them and processes and things involved. We have a lot of people in our community here that have no idea of any of this, like none. And I think that if the board could reach out more to people, having information on their website, on the township website in a timely fashion, it would really help to communicate what's going on in our community. I also want to say that I'm a little surprised. As some of you know, I was a familiar face in the meetings a few years back. There were some issues I was, I was interested in, so I spoke quite a bit. This is the first time I've attended a meeting for a long time. I find it surprising, frankly, from people whom I voted for, most of you here, that there's this new policy where we can only speak about things that are on the agenda at, at the, the first talk to the public, first call to the public. I find that rather inconvenient. A lot of us, you know, we have busy lives, we have children or whatever to take care of. And we really can't sit through a meeting of, you know, that may go on for hours before we get a chance to speak. So I think, I would like to ask the board to consider to allow people to speak about anything at all. If you really want to hear about the concerns of the community, it shouldn't be your agenda, okay? Your agenda is fine. Your agenda is going to be dealt with. It's the agenda. You're going to talk about it, okay? But if you really want to hear from the community, does everything have to be on your agenda or you just don't want to hear about things on your agenda?
Because you have one minute.
It will be a thing that will happen that people will be less inclined to come and talk at these meetings, okay? A lot of people are fairly cynical about government anyway. We all know that. But giving them an opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting is very respectful of their time. And allowing them to say what's on their mind, there are things that you have no idea about. You can't be everywhere. However, I do know that all of you care about this township and you work hard for it. In fact, I saw one of you, the other day I was driving down Nola Road, I saw one of you in an orange vest picking up litter on their own time. I just want to say, I appreciate that. And thank you for caring for our township. Please listen to the voices of the other people who aren't the seven, okay? Please allow us to speak at the beginning of these meetings about anything we want to, because we are your eyes and ears out here. Thank you.
Thank you. There it goes again. Sorry, guys. Next person on the agenda, or next person is Joanne Martel Pearson. Joanne, you have three minutes to address the board on agenda items.
Thank you. Well, it's helpful that I, oh, pardon me, five, seven, five, six, Earhart Road, Northfield Township. It's helpful that I followed Mr. Perry because I will just echo what he said and I will not need my three minutes. I agree. I don't think that it is the, in the best interest of the residents of Northfield Township to have to wait till the end of the board meeting to speak our questions to you or, well, they're not really questions, but to give you our concerns, thoughts, et cetera. So I understand that that changed what you just said, Mr. Dingnan.
I said that.
Burn and and I, I do agree. I think that this is a, a point of discussion for the board. I do greatly appreciate your time and effort. I know it can be thankless jobs. But I do think that allowing us to speak at the beginning of the meeting instead of having to stay on till the end of the meeting, who knows when the end will be, would be in better service to the residents of Northfield Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Warburton. Mr. Warburton, we are not able to allow you to speak. You're running an older version of Zoom. Let me see if I can adjust for that. Give me one moment. Let's see. Mr. Warburton, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. We can also see you, just so you know. But due to the version of Zoom that you're running, we had to promote you to panelist. But you now have three minutes to address us or any items that are on the agenda.
Thanks. With a very short comment, I have never heard of such a rule for the public, the call from the call to the public. It has always been bring whatever topic to the board you want. You have three uninterrupted minutes.
We're here to do the business of the board and in doing so, we give the public.
An opportunity to do your reign of, of leadership because it, there, there never has been a limitation on what topic you can bring to the board.
There isn't, sir. You can address the board on any topic at the end of the meeting.
No, no, you have two calls to the public and they should be identical.
Go ahead, Mr. Warburton. You have three minutes to address the board.
I'm done.
Thank you. Yep, have a good evening.
All right, goodbye.
Bye. Give me one moment to change the role of Mr. Warburton back to attendee. Hey, we'll try this, we'll try, let's see here. I do have Robin Waitus. Let's see if we can give her an opportunity here. Ms. Waitus, we've allowed you to talk. You are muted still, though. That is not working. Okay. Moving on in the agenda, we don't have anyone else in the call to the public. Our board member clarifications. I do have some items of clarification. Notification was provided to the members of all the marijuana establishments by Mary Bird that we were approaching a hundred and eighty days and that we were looking for a status update on the items as to where they were at. There were also communications with some of them in regards to questions they had with the planner. So the communications did take place. The communication as to whether they were on the agenda or not. I do not, I cannot verify that that happened. But the fact that the deadline was approaching, that was communicated to all of the applicants. Secondly, the the change to the agenda took place after the last election when we took, when the new board took office. I, as a supervisor, am tasked with developing an agenda. And the task of our board at our board meetings is to conduct the business of the township. In doing so, there are two opportunities that we offer the public to address our board. The first is the petitions and communications at the beginning of our meeting. In which time any written submissions that are provided to the board can, are distributed if they have not been distributed before that. And any member of the public may address our board for a period of time of three minutes on any items that are on the agenda. Okay, that gives you an opportunity to make your thoughts be heard before the board considers and deliberates a topic that is on the agenda. You are also given an opportunity at the end of the agenda to address the board on any and all topics that you wish to address to the board. That is a very usual and customary thing. It is done by thousands of boards across Michigan, the state of Michigan. Both township boards, city councils, school boards, and many other boards. We do this because it is our job to execute the business of the township. And the items that are on the agenda, you have seen some of these meetings lead into the wee hours of the next day even in, in the past. We try very much to be efficient with your time and our time. And we have been able to get our board meetings down to about an hour and a half, two hours. Typically within two hours. We try to do that so it gives you the time to address us before and after. So you can address us on an item before that's on the agenda and you can comment on any action we took after that. With that being said, are there any other board members that would like to provide any clarification at this time? Okay, Ms. Zelenok, go ahead. Ms. Zelenok, you are muted.
Thank you. So the question I have is for the applicants that for the marijuana businesses that are on the agenda, were they told that it was going to be placed on the agenda this evening?
I do not know that for a fact.
And who would be the person that would tell them?
I would assume that would be either the planner or the attorney. I know they've been in regular communications with both. All, all three applicants have been in regular communications with both.
All right. So I, I don't know if the planner or the attorney are on, but I can ask this question when we get to that subject. I think, well, to, I, I think as a board, we should have a of putting things on our website more timely. I'll take the no burn, for example. It was on Facebook and then it was put on our website. So I think we need to maybe it certainly at the board meetings, maybe decide what things should go on the website. So that we do communicate and use that tool as efficient as we can. I don't like seeing things on Facebook before it's on our website, especially something as important as like no burn policy. When there was a ban, a burn, a ban on burning as well as other items. I must admit, as a board member, this is the first time I realized there was a change to the call to the public. I personally don't support it. I think that people should come and have the opportunity. We only meet typically twice a week, twice a month and tell us what's on their mind, whatever it is. And so I don't support that. And I would look to change that.
Thank you, Ms. Well, Ms. Check.
Yep, I wanted to also comment on Ms. Zelenok and Mr. Perry's comments on the call to the public as well as Mr. Warburton's that I really wasn't aware of that issue either and it's not on our, front of our agenda so that the.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It says, citizen comment, please limit your comments to agenda items. That's the first words it says.
Okay, you're correct.
And that's from one.
It says, please leave. So I'm assuming I'm as a resident, they're saying, please limit. That doesn't say you cannot speak at the call to the public on anything other than agenda items. And from what I've read about calls to the public, we absolutely cannot tell the public what they can or cannot speak to. It, we can't. And in it, in my mind, we should have voted on this as a board to decide if it's something we want to do.
This is not.
We, we can make it a board decision. But let me finish my comments. So that's my feeling. Is that the public should be able to speak to whatever they want to. If they want to get up and talk about their dog, that's fine. But so, and when we can't talk about wanting to have better communication with the public and then telling them you have to wait sometimes three hours to talk to us. I, I don't find that very copacetic to what we're trying to say when we're saying we want to communicate better. To Mr. Perry's comments, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon's comment. Our Planning Commission report is always for the month previous. I was going to add, because I did make myself a note about it, to tell the board that the public was asking for more communication as well from the board about any big issues that are coming up. I think it's probably too late to be sending out a postcard since this is coming before the board on the twenty seventh. Expected that they would even get a postcard in time. There has been a lot, a lot, a lot of chatter around town about this issue. So I would expect there's more than five percent that know about it, but that's just my opinion. And I also want to ask that, and this is not to do with the. And I also want to ask that, and this is not to do with the agenda comments, sorry, that when we get to the end of the meeting for a board member comments that we don't vote on items that are not on the agenda. To me, that is like, if one of the public wanted to speak to something, it's already passed the time where they get to speak to it. So can we not maybe create a policy? Let's do that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Check. Anyone else? Ms. Manley.
Um, yeah, I want to agree with the public and Mr. Perry. I think he said that very well. I don't think we should also limit the people to comment on the agenda items. It's their time or their board. I feel that they should be able to speak to whatever they like. And if we need a motion or just a discussion on this, I think we should have that. And also to go along with Ms. Check, yes, making motions and voting during comments is, that was very poor. And I don't think we should do that. And maybe as a board, just agree not to do that amongst ourselves. So that's it.
Agree. Thank you, Ms. Manley. Ms. Otto.
You're muted. You're muted.
Sorry. I also wanted to reiterate too, that I wasn't aware that we are limiting comments only to agenda items. I think that if, I just don't agree with it. It doesn't matter if I agree or disagree with the comments being made. I think that this is the time for what's voiced to be heard. And, and they have the opportunity to have our eyes and ears on them. The other thing that I wanted to address is the legal notice. While it is appropriate that we submit the legal notices the way we do for the township, I am very concerned about singling out one item over another. Every little thing would need to be addressed in some manner. Who decides that? So if that is something that the board needs to take up and we should, it should be in a communication plan. And that goes along with any other types of communication that we do. Like Lenore made the comment of the burden notice and everything. I, we were having a communication plan. All these, and within a communication plan, all these types of topics for discussion could be addressed in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moco.
I just want to plead with the public that anybody who wants information, sign up for the township newsletter. That's really about the best source you can get. It comes, it tells you how to get to the, the agendas. It basically tells you anything you want to know without, without that township newsletter, the digital township newsletter that you sign up for on the, on the website. Or if you can't find it on the website, call the town hall. I believe, I want to say it's weekly. I've been getting it for three years. That's the only way I've known what's going on in town previous to now and still helps me out. So that would be anybody's best, best source of information. And I agree, we should never update anything on social media before it's updated on our website. That, that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson.
I just want to kind of echo a majority of people inside here. I, I do think you probably absolutely necessary vote on things after the final call of the public. I just, I think people are here to talk about what's on our agenda. And even, and even if we vote on something that's not on the agenda during the meeting or something like that, that's different. We'll lock on it. Um, and back, back to the other point that's been brought up. I mean, our duty is to the public. They're taking time out of their day to come to these meetings to see us. And so what if it goes to the wee hours of the morning?
Sure. I work very early mornings. I know I wouldn't like it, but I mean, that's why I'm here. I'm here to serve the public. And that's kind of my public duty. If people are going to take their time and take time out of their day to come talk to us about whatever it is, whatever they want to talk to us about, I'm more than willing to hear them regardless of the policy going forward. In addition to that, yeah, I, I think it's very hard, especially with new developments, which are something newer in this township for sure, as we don't have a lot of them, to stay, to stay quote unquote transparent here, which is what our township should and ought to strive towards. However, I also know that like in Ann Arbor or bigger developed, bigger developed cities or municipalities, like it'd be hard to send out a postcard for every new development that's happening. I understand the importance of this and we need to be as transparent about it as we can. However, any little change to this community, it'd be very hard to notify the public of every little change happening every time a change happens. This is a very big change. I do think, sign up for our newsletter, keep tabs on our website, keep tabs on the Facebook groups, which there's plenty of chatter about important stuff going on on the township from our, not even just us, but other people in the township. Communication is key and staying connected in this modern age, it's like one of the easiest ways to stay in touch and know what's going on. And it doesn't always have to be us, the way we stay in, to, to be able to stay in touch. I myself understand that we got to try the best we can to stay transparent with you, the, the public, who we're here to represent. And I, I know going forward, I think the board will strive for that more.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anyone else? Hang on, let's move on. Correspondence. There's obviously been a tremendous amount of correspondence to the board via email. All those correspondence aren't relevant to this evening. And I would hope that they would be, I plan to include them in the next board packet. Anybody have anything else on that? Were there any other correspondence that anyone received that are related to this evening? Okay, moving on to old business. First is fire department report. That was requested that that be pulled out. Mr. Wagner is on the call and present. Welcome, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you.
And Ms. Zelenok and Ms. Otto were the ones requesting to pull that out.
So I'd like Mr. Wagner to, on number four, on the fire department millage expiration, I would like him to talk a little bit about that based on his comments in the report.
Sure. So our millage expires, I think we have one more collection in December, from what I understand. I've never been the one to actually go forth and get the language and stuff like that. It's always been, I believe, the supervisor or Howard did it one year. So I'm not familiar with that, but I did get with Christina. And she let me know that if we wanted a millage approval on the, if we wanted an August election, it would have to be approved by April 27th, is what she had told me. I've told previous boards, and I think I've even mentioned to this board recently in the past, our staffing model is, current staffing model is a part-time staffing model where we try to staff and we have staffed for probably 11 years now, a 24-hour person on duty. It's very unstable. We, we are really having trouble getting people to work it. So understand that all of these guys that are working this model, with the exception of one, have full-time jobs outside of the fire department. So I've been, I've been, I've been saying this for quite a few years, that we need to start looking at moving our staffing to a form of a full-time staffing. So, and I, and I just don't have the funding in the current millage to do that. So with, I believe, the public safety building, millage is expiring. And I don't even know, to be honest with you, what that millage is. I would like to, you know, have some discussion about possibly increasing the fire millage to two and a half mills. So if we were to do that, the difference to the budget of the fire department would be a $225,000 to $230,000. We, we just don't have the money in the, in the fire department budget as it stands to be able to generate funds to employ full-time staffing and their benefits. Currently, we basically pay a per hour wage right now to the firefighter that's on duty. I believe it's $16.50. If we were going to do this, we would have to make it so that we are competitive to other fire departments in the area. And I can tell you, other than one fire department everywhere around us, they are all have some type of a full-time staffing model. We just don't. In Northfield Township, we have a full-time police department. We have a full-time wastewater treatment plant. We have full-time staffing. And, you know, the senior center, the township offices, and it's just time for the fire department to take a step forward and try to have a more consistent and more confidence that we have good staffing in the fire department. And that, what I'm, what I'm discussing there would allow us to have basically three 24-hour shifts. So that would cover one person 24/7. And then our weakest time for most any paid-on-call fire department is Monday through Friday, eight to five, when all of our paid-on-call people are at work. So what I'd like to do is have the three 24-hour shifts and then have a Monday through Friday type so that we would have at least two people on duty during the business hours. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. We are getting ready to go into negotiations with the fire union. And so all of this is kind of coming together at the, at a timely manner that we can have those discussions. The union's very open to have that discussion. And I think I have a good model in mind to be able to make it work for, because we don't want to lose our paid-on-call people. We need them as much as we do full-time people, but we need to stabilize our staffing in the fire department.
Thank you, Chief.
And I can't do this without the support of the board, just so.
Do you know what our current millage rate is?
It's like 1.92.
Yeah. Okay. That, that's the headly adjusted rate, right?
Correct. It was, it was two before.
Okay. So you're asking for, okay. All right.
And, and I can certainly put a whole program together if the board is interested in moving that direction. And so if we didn't have it approved, I guess by the April 27th, and we had an election in November, I'm not, Christina didn't tell me when that was, but I would say we would probably have a couple more months. And I do believe if we wanted to have it in August, and Kathy, maybe you can help me. I believe that would be the only thing on the agenda at this point anyhow. So it, do we want to have a special election just for that? I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it's appropriate. So, and trust me when I say, I'm the last one. I pay the taxes too. I don't want to increase anybody's taxes anymore than we have to. I've looked at trying to just go a quarter percent. And I feel like if we went that quarter percent, we would be barely scraping by. And I would be wanting to, having to come back for more later. And I think that the full half mil will get us to where we can make it work.
Okay, I have a quick question in there, Ms. Otto. Would this affect our fire rating?
Oh, it potentially could. We're, so we're, we're in a position, and I've been in discussions with ISO to do a, a full study. My under, I had always thought they had done a full study for the fire department. And just in the last two months, because we have been rated and we've done a part, we did a, we redid a partial study where we went from a nine to an 8B probably two years ago. But when I went looking for a full study, when I talked to ISO, they said they don't have one on, on staff for us. So putting that in place and getting us down, I'm pretty confident we could get to a seven and maybe even a six with full-time staffing, with the improvement that we've had in recent years of our dispatch. And then the biggest reason in any rural community that, that they don't have good ratings is they don't have water supply. Well, ISO now has a way that you can perform a task of flowing water for two straight hours. And, and you can help that tremendously. And we're getting, we're very close to being in a position to do that. And we've trained on it in the past. So if we can, if we can just supply 250 gallons a minute for two hours with our tanking operation, that would help our, our ISO rating. And we want to have that in place so that we can all do it, do it all at one time. So.
Okay. All right, Ms. Otto, go ahead.
Yeah. So Bill, that's what I wanted to talk to you. That's what I wanted to ask is what would the change look like in the dollars? That's really what I was looking at. And what I would suggest, even though, even though you may not want it for August, is that we get it on the agenda for the 27th anyways. This way, I know that it's pushing, it's pushing everybody to do some work and get things done quickly because really it's not the 27th. It's like, we need to get everything in by around the 20th. So the one thing that I was thinking is, is that if we're not going to do it in August and we do it in November, we do it in the November election. Kathy, what is the timeline that we need to get things in for the November election?
Looks like August 10th.
August 10th?
Yep. And it has to be in April 27th by 5:00 PM. So if we do try to get something in, it'd have to be at a special meeting.
And we have nothing on the election for August?
Nope, nothing.
Do we know if we have anything coming in November?
Don't know of anything yet.
Because what's it cost? $5,000?
Probably between five and seven.
Yeah, with COVID, might have a few more people having to work.
Okay. I don't know. I'm going to leave that up to you, but that's really what I wanted to see is, let's just have it out in black and white to see what it looks like.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Let me go to Mr. Nelson.
Um, just, just a follow-up to that. If we do consider putting this on in the November election, we should also look into cost, actually getting letters out or something to notify any tax increase, I really think we should notify the public of. And even so they can be well informed when they come to the voting booth. That's all I had to say.
Anyone else have any comments or questions for Chief Wagner? Yes, Ms. Zelenok.
So Chief, what would happen if it weren't to pass? What would be the backup plan? So since we're going for an increase, is it possible to do a renewal and then have two initiatives on the ballot for an increase as well?
I suppose anything's possible. I, I guess my question would be, how many elections are there, you know, between, you know, to, if, if it fails in November, I don't know when a next election would be. I know we have one more collection, I believe, a tax collection in December. So at that point, you know, I don't know when the next election would be.
I believe you do them in May typically. Is that right, Manley?
Yep.
Yep. So May, I guess my thought was, if you, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not sure the best way to approach it to ensure that, obviously, that we continue funding the fire and medical rescue. And my thought was, even on the ballot, if you had a renewal and then on the same ballot had an increase to accommodate for full-time. I don't know if that would be a good approach or not, or just go full force on the August and then as well as November. And if both of them were to fail, I guess go back to May and do a renewal. I'm, I'm thinking of a strategy in case it didn't pass.
Right. I, I don't know is that I'd want to try to give them an either/or option because I think every time you're going to take the, the lesser option, I think, just, just because that was part of the reason why we combined the millages, you know, we used to have three fire millages and two or three police millages. And when two of them would come up at the same time, inevitably one would fail because the voters were confused. And so once we were able to combine both police and And so once we were able to combine both police and fire millages into one, then, then we haven't had any issues since then. So, um.
Yeah. Okay. So I mean, personally, I think we should try for the August, um, one. If we can get the detail in time and just to let people, you know, we do put out a newsletter and our tax bills that go out July first, which is in our report today and that it's due by June seventeenth, I believe, is the latest. So we do have an opportunity to, you know, have something in the newsletter that goes out to all the taxpayers, which would be obviously people that would be impacted by this. Um, I do want to let people know too, just from an office staffing that, Ms. Hostess, our deputy treasurer will be on maternity leave for July first through probably mid-August. So, um, we will be short-staffed in the office at that point in time. Just so if there is any additional help that needs to be on the election, I think we need to explore other opportunities. I don't know if the county could help or something.
Have the county for some assistance. That would be great. Manley?
So it's just as a thought.
Um, so in order to get the millage prepared, I guess maybe Ken and I could work together on that. And if it is okay for us to, me to reach out to Mr. Fink if we need help, because I've gotten in trouble before for reaching out to the attorney with questions without the board approval. So just so you know that I'm going to reach out to the attorney then if we need help. If we want to try to get on the agenda and it will have to go to a special meeting at some point then, because it has to be in by five o'clock.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to work with you if that's the, uh, if, if there's a motion out there for the board to do that.
Yeah, I think we can figure it out.
Thank you. I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Chief. Would anyone like? Yeah.
I was gonna ask Mr. K, Mr. Dignan, do you look for a motion? I, I don't have one prepared, but.
Okay, I can make a motion, uh, make a motion to direct the supervisor and the clerk to work with the township's attorney to draft the language necessary to place on the ballot a millage of two and a half mills for uh, fire and medical rescue for the August election for twenty twenty-one.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Dignan, supported by Manley. Any discussion, Ms. Eleanor?
I would make a friendly amendment that we include our chief as well.
Uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
On, on the ballot language, sure, sure.
Yeah, and just, you know, numbers and stuff like that as, as needed.
This, Mr. Moko and then Ms. Manley.
I just, uh, Chief mentioned the building millage will be paid off soon. I think it's important to know when, when that will be. Because it could potentially be a wash adding a millage and getting rid of one, which would be a lot easier to stomach. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Ms. Manley?
And I just kind of want to make sure that if we do go ahead with this, that this is the route we're gonna go. I don't know how it would work if we do this, we approve this and then we switch gears. So there might be some logistics that might have to be. I mean, we don't want to hold an election for no reason. So I guess we all just need to be sure that this is what we want to do going forward.
That's why the motion, I mean, the motion's out there to proceed.
Right. And it, if we change our minds, we could all vote no on the motion in the future when it comes to the board. So.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I, I, I just think, um.
Yes, Ms. Eleanor?
Uh, Mr. Wagner, it's my, if I recall, it's twenty twenty-two, the end of, I think, the last tax is in December for twenty twenty-two that we collected. That's when we collect the, um, the building.
I believe that's right. That's correct.
And I think from a township perspective, the added payments ends in December. It could be April, but twenty twenty-three. But I, if I recall, the millage ends in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, E, if that just texted me, it looks like the last bond payment is, uh, April of twenty twenty-two.
Curious. And that means the collection, if the last bond payment, it would be before our December taxes. And so that would be the December twenty twenty-one tax payment. That would be on the millage then. So it'd be up this year.
Which would, which would go hand in hand.
Right.
Right. So that would go hand in hand with a fire collection.
Yep. Cause if the, again, just we do the bond, we do all the township, um, millages on the December tax, taxes. So that would tell me that would be the last tax season then. So goes hand in hand. You might want to add that newsletter.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Check?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto? As a muted, yes. Yes. Okay. Seven zero.
Thank, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate everything you guys do. Absolutely. All right. Next item on the, uh, agenda is resolution twenty-one dash six, three, eight fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget amendment. Number three revised. Um, Ms. Zelenak, did you want to?
No, actually I don't want to make that a motion. Thank you. I already made my motion at the last meeting.
Anyone else? Yes, uh, Yvette, go right ahead. Ms. Starbuck?
Hi, just wanted to comment. This is the same motion that came last meeting, uh, with the adjustment. Um, could show that five thousand dollars for recreation board and five thousand dollars for land preservation. So just a, a typo edited for, for context.
Thank you, Ms. Starbuck.
Um, I, I'll move to adopt the budget revision as directed.
Okay. Adopting a budget resolution twenty-one dash six, thirty-eight as presented.
As outlined in our packet.
Yep.
And I'll support.
A support by Otto. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Nelson?
Yes.
Check? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Moko?
Yes.
Passes six, one.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Starbuck. Appreciate all your work. Next item on the agenda is our, uh, discussion about the township manager job posting update. You see in your packet, there was, uh, some information that was provided to us, uh, from our attorney in regards to the firms that are out there. I personally, uh, just my own thoughts are I'm not certain we need to spend, uh, you know, twenty thousand dollars on a firm. I think that's a, a steep, uh, amount of money to spend on a firm. And I, I, I think if, if we can't, uh, hire a township attorney, how are we gonna review a township attorney? So you have no way of evaluating, yeah, them. How are we gonna evaluate them once they're here? So I mean, that's just my personal thoughts. So anyone, uh, yes, Ms. Manley and then Ms. Chick.
Um, did the committee get together and speak about this?
If not, yeah.
Okay. That would have been nice to be.
I wish we had, had that opportunity.
Okay.
Got this information late. It's, it's on here just for discussion. It doesn't need action tonight. Ms. Chick?
Yep. I, um, actually did a little bit of research and there are some, um, and I, we'd have to check references on these, um, people, but, uh, there's actually somebody in Ypsilanti. Her name is, um, Amy Talent who does, uh, searches. And, um, so, and I think the range was like fourteen thousand dollars and up. This one says fifteen thousand to twenty-two thousand. But I'm a hundred percent behind getting a firm to do this. We have so much on our plate. I don't think we can do it justice. And I, I just would rather have professional do it, take it out of our hands, give us recommendations and then we can, um, decide what we want to do. But, uh, I, we're not experts and these people are.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Ms. Otto?
So I, um, I, I could go for doing the, the recruitment, uh, or having a, a search firm personally. Uh, the company I work for, that's all we, that's how we, uh, look for executives is, uh, through search firm. It doesn't mean that you're only getting one candidate. I think, um, the confusion may be that, uh, they're just gonna give you one. They give you multiple and you have a selection to go by. If you don't want any of them, you don't have any of them and you don't pay. So it's only if you hire the, the one that they select that you pay. Um, so, um, I would, um, I would consider, uh, using, uh, an executive firm only because Janet's right. We don't, we have a lot on our plate and we don't have enough time. But the other thing too is, is that the committee does need to get together. Um, and I feel that if, uh, if the committee's not getting together, then this is the way we're gonna have to go.
Right. Uh, I thought it was important to bring this information to the board, uh, once, now, when it was received. And, uh, the committee does need to get together in the next, uh, week or so leading up to, and I would imagine the committee would bring forth a recommendation at the next township board meeting if that is, uh, something that the rest of the board is comfortable with. Yes, Ms. Chick?
So are you asking for a recommendation to go with a firm or a recommendation on a firm to go with?
Either to go with, it, it could be both. It could be whether to go with a firm and if we do go with a firm, which firm?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could be a combination of those things.
Sounds great.
But, yep, this was, this was just more information that had come available that wanted to be provided to you. Uh, next item is the north, yes, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Zelenak, go right ahead.
Uh, I would like to say that I, I'm not for hiring a fir- firm. If we can't hire the person, how do we expect to manage the person and evaluate this person? I think that's all part of the process. I think the money can be used for different purposes such as roads. I think we already have a model. We've done, I believe, you know, this will be my second search for a township manager and this will be the third. I think we have a process in place. We should just implement what we have, review it to see if it needs to be tweaked and move forward. That is my comments.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eleanor. Mr. Moko?
If we have nothing to lose by using a headhunting firm or a search firm, whatever we want to call it, um, and put out an RFP, I don't see, I don't really see the issue. Uh, there hasn't been much success in, in hiring the managers in the past. Um, so I say we go at it, uh, on our, I mean, let the com- subcommittee decide, but if we have nothing to lose by using a professional firm, which we use every day too in my line of work. So, um, but then again, if we can save the township the money and find one through an RFP, go that route. I mean, do both, see where it lands.
Yeah, we'll need a review if we can do both at the same time. I don't know that they allow that. Ms. Chick, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Just one more comment. What I did find out when I was doing my research was that you
pool of candidates going through a search firm, then if you send out an RFP, so, uh, and, 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 um, uh, it's not that we don't get to evaluate them because we do.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, they don't get to pick.
Yeah. They just, they just clear the weeds a bit. So, Ms. Otto?
Yeah, that's all I was gonna say, Ken, is, um, a search firm, really all they do is screen. They're doing all the work. Uh, as far as screening that person, making sure that person's qualified. Um, you have to consider too, the advertisement that we'll do, uh, the outreach that we do, uh, the initial interviewing of these people and screening, that all takes time and money. And part of that all goes into their re, uh, into their fees. So, um, if we could do both, I wouldn't mind doing both. But like you said, Ken, I don't know if you could do both.
Their contracts might restrict that.
Right.
While that active search is going on. But we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and, uh, report back to the board with a recommendation at the next meeting. All right. Any other comments on that? All right, we'll move down. Northfield Community Park request for proposal update. I do believe that Ms. Otto provided that.
Yeah, um, yeah, this is only an FYI. I wanted to bring up that, um, that we did, uh, the park designer RFP. Um, the attorney looked at it, uh, added his comments. And we already submitted it out, uh, for proposal. I wanted to show the actual, um, uh, clean version, I would say. And then there is the red line version with the attorney's changes and our changes. So this was just for informational purposes only. And so far, we have received, uh, four inquiries.
Ms., Ms. Otto, I did refer two people over to you as well that had, had, uh, contacted me, uh, that stayed there. Their biggest concern was the timeframe in providing the grid RFP. They were really concerned that there wasn't enough time to provide an adequate proposal. So.
I think some of them were, uh, concerned more with the timeline of providing design after, um, and I, and really what we were trying to do is just get dates out there. Um, I, we are putting together and I'm working with, uh, Jennifer, uh, Carlisle on this and I frequently ask questions. So those that have asked us questions, we'll put them together and we'll put them out there for public, uh, knowledge. Really the one that, um, the design of the date that we're really concerned with is the phase one, which is the park entrance and the, and the trails, the one that we've already submitted a grant for. That is the one that's the most important, uh, that we need to have a, uh, design for. As far as, um, phase two, uh, we won't be able to apply for that grant, apply for a grant until next year on that. So it'll be more time. And some of these dates are gonna be negotiable. Once we design, uh, 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 identify a firm that we want to work with, that can be adjusted.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Otto. Ms. Chick?
Yep. And while we're talking about the, uh, community park, um, I would like to, I'm gonna ask for it now, but I'll put in a formal request or an agenda item to get the boundaries, the, the, the boundary committee put together in front of the board at the next meeting for a decision.
Oh, your park boundary recommendation?
Yeah. Okay.
Give me one second.
Yep.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I noted that for the next agenda.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are we ready to go to the next item? All right. Next item is a seventy-five Barker Road RFP update. Uh, I want to thank Ms. Zelenak for taking, uh, some of that off of my plate. And, uh, Ms. Zelenak, do you want to provide us an update on that?
Sure. Um, as the notes does, we have received one proposal. I followed up with the individual. We'll have, um, the committee, which I need to follow up and schedule a meeting hopefully on Monday that, so we can make a re, um, not, yeah, make a recommendation at our next board meeting. So Mr. Moko and Mr. Dignan, think about Monday at like four o'clock. I'll send out a notice. Hold that open, hold that time open.
All right. Works for me.
Good. How about you, Mr. Dignan? We'll schedule it right here. Four o'clock. Hold that time.
Yeah, I think that'll work. Uh, let me make sure. I think that'll work.
For us to review at the meeting as well. So then we can go from there.
Sure. Um, four o'clock's fine.
Yeah, great.
All right. Um, also the seventy-five Barker Road Committee is, uh, well, well, we'll, we'll be talking at that time too about the, uh, about the easement discussion with regards to the parking. So we'll address that, or we'll talk about that at that time. Anybody else have any questions on 75 Barker? All right, next item is the lawn care contract. I just wanted to include this because we hadn't, in the past, we are going to, we're continuing with J and M through this cutting season. I did put in there the impact of the budget could be up to $600. I believe, I definitely believe it'll be less than that. That was the addition that the board approved of the $25 per cut to the part of the park that was being paid for by the dentist and, and Pam Sanderson over on Barker Road. But that won't necessarily have to be cut every week. So it, it may not be, you know, $600 over the course of the season. It may be less than that. Mr. Wagner, did you have any questions in regards to the contract? Or in, it's just a carryover from last year with the addition of that small area?
Yep, I know questions. I just wanted to let everybody know that I went through all of the contract yesterday and we went to each property with Jason to discuss, you know, expectations and thoughts. And I had no idea that that little strip of property was Northfield Townships that. So, yeah, so we discussed that and all of the other properties and as well as what's going on in the park right now. And I know that there's a, a group of volunteers that are going to be doing some repairs there. So they're going to do their best to mow around it and I believe they're mowing tomorrow. So they should be starting everything tomorrow, so.
All right. And I know they're grading, I know that's coming. I don't, I don't know if there's a update on that or not.
When I talked, when I talked to Sam, it was going to be three weeks then, probably a couple of weeks now, before they were going to get to putting the dirt and filling all the ruts in. So that's why I told Jason just to work around best he could.
Okay, yeah, because they have to get more dirt over there. Yeah, Ms., yeah, they just have to get more dirt over there, I know that.
Yeah, that was my comment, there's not enough dirt there.
Yeah, they know that. Yeah.
Okay.
I think that was excess dirt that was left over from the dirt buy for the, I don't, I'm not even, yeah, probably. All right. Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Wagner, we appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda is consider Mr. Hand's request to purchase township-owned properties. Page 147 in your packet. Ms. Zelenok, do you mind updating the board on some conversations we had?
So if I recall back in December, we have talked about this and that Ken and I have had an initial meeting with Mr. Fink, our attorney, and that we had a follow-up last week, on Friday with Mr. Fink, to really put up a plan together that we would like to bring to the board. Some things that we discussed were putting a deed restriction on the properties so that there's like no building or storage, that we'd ask a price of the SEV times two and that we would offer the properties to the adjacent owners and then the Horseshoe Lake Corporation. But we're still trying to figure out, you know, a plan. Again, people may know that the history was the township did purchase these properties, properties to protect the floodplain. And then now we're being charged taxes on that. I think there might be 78 properties, if I recall. The SEV is, the SEV is 33,000, again rounded numbers. And so we pay approximately $2,000 in taxes per year on these properties. So I personally would like to hold off on this until we come up with a formal policy of how we want to handle these properties as to, instead of having individuals come without having a formal policy that we would like to do.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenok, Ms. Otto.
So this isn't the first time that this has come to our board. This was also in the previous term that the request has come to our board. And we've also reached out to the Horseshoe Lake Association. And from my understanding that they either, I don't know if they responded or didn't respond, but I would say that when we do put a formal plan in place, Lenore, that we give, if we are offering this to like Horseshoe Lake or whatever entity, that we give them a timeline. Because we need to make sure that they have 30 days to respond. And if we don't, then we go on to the next person, so.
Yeah.
That was kind of what we discussed is, is the different stages of who could buy.
Yeah. Because this isn't his first request. He, he's already purchased property on the, in that area already in the last term and he came back again. So this is probably, I don't know if this is his second request or third request, but it just seems that we keep asking the association if, what they want to do and we don't get a response.
This is at least the third request, at least.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Right. And this item was asked, put on our agenda by Mr. Hand.
So he would probably like an answer, so he should probably get done soon, you know.
I mean, since it was his request to be on the agenda, he didn't, he didn't, no, he, he will not be, okay. It does not say he'll be present, so I don't think he's in the audience, but.
Don't see him.
Don't see him there either.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to give him that opportunity. But, you know, I think it's premature for us at this point to, to take action on, on any of those properties. Ms. Zelenok, myself, Mr. Fink and the Horseshoe Lake Corporation have had discussions and, and we continue to move in a forward direction with, you know, with Mr. Fink on this. It's just not a real easy answer. Yeah, Ms. Otto.
I think we need to have a timeline though, because, and I'm not saying that it needs to be at the next board meeting. Either you give it 30 days or 60 days to come back and have a response from Mr. Hand. I, I think the last time he brought it to our attention was back in July. Also, again, in August and we tabled it. We just can't keep kicking the can down the road with him. We have to respond.
Yes, Ms. Elena, and then Mr. Moko.
Yeah, we'd just like to say we have been communicating, as Mr. Dignan has said, with the Horseshoe Lake Corporation, they're looking for what will be the price. And that's what we're trying to determine. And that's what complicates the matter. Again, I just said that the SEV is 33,000, a few times that's $66,000. So for all the properties, I don't think, you know, they would be interested in that price and it's trying to figure out. And that's the complication is, I think unfortunately, the township got ourselves into this mess about buying properties that maybe we shouldn't have bought. Now we have them and now we're getting taxed on and we have paid money for. And what's trying to get to fair value as well as trying to, it's a complicated issue, as Mr. Dignan has said, and we are trying to work through. And I agree with you, Ms. Otto, that we need a timeframe. I think, I was very pleased with the meeting that we had with Mr. Fink and it took a while just to get all of us together to say, hey, we've got to get moving on this. So I think we have momentum now.
Think we do. Thank you, Ms. Otto, Mr. Moko.
I think Lenore pretty much hit it on the head, but we need to get a policy for it. Get with Fink, get a policy for it. And, and Horseshoe Lake can let their residents know also. I mean, that's, that's something that.
They're required to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, they can send that out and, and let everybody know, this is the policy going forward. If you're interested in the land, make it simple. Doesn't need to come before the board, as far as I'm concerned. If, if we're doing it for one resident, we got to do it, make it fair across the board. So that's all I got. It's long past due to have a policy for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean.
Township does have a lot of land.
Right, we had initially looked at whether it could be given into a preserve or something to that effect. And that became very complicated and, and, and was not something that could be done without public benefit. And public benefit then got into the weeds about, it has, does it have to be everybody? Or can it be just Horseshoe Lake? And it, it, so it's come full circle around to where we're at. And, and we're, I think we're very close. I can say that, we're very close, so. But this will be back to the board. It, it, it won't be months down the road. It'll be in the next month or so, the most.
Yes, at the max.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we are, as Mr. Dignan, we made some good progress and it's, it's a complicated issue. And I think, again, the township, we got ourselves into a complicated issue. Good intentions, it probably didn't turn out as expected.
Right. All right. Moving on, next item under new businesses is consideration of continuation of virtual meetings. This is based on conversations I've had with the township attorney and his recommendation. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the electronics meeting procedures as outlined in our packet, that the Northfield Township Board of Trustees establishes the following, that the meetings will be held electronically until the end of the state of emergency or December 31st, 2021, or the Board of Trustees determines it will no longer hold electronic meetings. The procedure goes on to describe those meetings, where they will be posted, how they will be addressed and how the public can participate.
Ask support.
A motion by Dignan, supported by Zelenok. I will tell you, we talked about hybrid meetings, we talked about being in person. It was at the advice of the attorney that we not do hybrid meetings at this point in time until such time that we can appropriately adapt to them in a way that doesn't create potential liability or, or conflict with, you know, if, if 26 people come to the meeting, do you have to end the meeting? Because it violates the number of people that can be in a public meeting. You know, you know, how do you address? It's, it's very complicated with the hybrid stuff. It did not work well for us when we did it before. It created a problem. You know, I want to be in person. I really want to be in person, I think that's important. But I also understand I, I want to take the advice of my attorney, so. All right, let me go to Mr. Nelson, Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Otto. Go ahead, Mr. Nelson.
I just had a quick question. Is it simply because of the Washtenaw State of Emergency that there's the 25-person cap in a meeting? Or is it, is that the state mandate right now?
Well, let me see, I have, I don't know if Mr. Fink or Mariah, Mariah? I'm going to promote you to panelist. Let's see if Mariah Fink can answer that question for us. Are you there, Mariah?
Hi.
You are there. So did you hear the question?
I did not, I wasn't listening.
The question is, the, the number of people that can attend in public, is that, is that a restriction placed on by the Washtenaw County State of Emergency? Or is that still a state mandate, the public gathering limits?
The, the 25 people? Yeah, that's a state mandate.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that when your 26th person arrives, you have to end your meeting.
Yeah.
So you can't say to that 26th person, you can't come in, you just have to end the meeting completely.
Hmm. All right. Thanks very much, that's what I was looking for.
Nelson, Ms. Chick, Ms. Otto, and then Mr. Moko. Ms. Chick, go ahead.
First thing I want to say is I really want to do in-person meetings. I'm very disappointed that we can't do them. It, it puts a whole different relationship between us and the public and we need to get back to that. But since we can't, I'm very interested in doing, even when we can meet in person, to do hybrid meetings. I think since we're extending this period out where we can't meet, that in the meantime, we look into options with different companies and get bids for how to actually set that up for our township. Because I think it, with all the participation we get with the virtual meetings, it would be a shame not to be able to offer that to them once we get to meet in person. So got my vote for that.
I couldn't agree with you more, Ms. Chick. Yep, Ms. Otto and then Mr. Moko.
So I do want to, you know, I do want to go back to onsite meetings, but I do think that a hybrid approach is, is the best way because you are playing to a wider audience, you have more accessibility to a greater audience. After this, after we vote on this particular agenda item, I, I would like to see us also, you know, I plan to make a motion that we get a estimate for equipment so that we could have a, a better sound system, a better media and be able to address the crowd better. I know when we did it before, we didn't have the equipment. We didn't have the tools in place. You can't do a Zoom meeting hybrid with only one person having a laptop. So it does not work that way. So I think that, I think we have to get the tools in place first before we get the hybrid model in place.
Yeah, I agree, sound is our biggest challenge right now and, and, and we are continuing to work down that path. But that will be coming to the board too, probably in, probably in June, actually, just looking at timeframes. Mr. Moko, go ahead.
I love what Janet Jackie said. I just, that's a question more for Mariah, I guess. 25 people, I don't know where that number comes from, if you've got a small, small boardroom or a large boardroom. I'm sure it's from the state, but if we could meet at the school, I'm sure we could set that up, meet in the auditorium where you have, I don't even know the capacity. I mean, that to me, you do in-person there, you, obviously you could have more than 25. We do it all, we've done it all year long for wrestling, basketball, volleyball. So I don't, I don't see how that 25-person capacity could come into play if we could move our meetings from town hall to the school gym. To make this work.
I haven't looked, because of the state of emergency in Washtenaw County and most of the municipalities decided to stay virtual, I haven't looked at that, at the regulation recently. And so it might have been changed from 25. But the last time I looked, it was 25 people was the limit. And you also had to be able to do the social distancing, which gets really complicated when you have a small boardroom. You have to be able to fit those 25 people in with six feet between them. So, but I'd be happy to take another look at that and, and see if there's something new.
Yeah, I'd love to know if we could, if we could move our venue. I mean, over to the, like I said, to the high school gym where you could sit six feet apart and still have a thousand people or however many people in there.
Right. I think the other, there's, there's two things, types of gatherings and gatherings affiliated with educational. I know we're, we're different. And we'd also have to check whether or not the school district is allowing gatherings that are not directly correlated to K-12 student populations.
Yes.
Because they, they may or may not be. I know they weren't at one time because it was exposing their buildings to people that are not directly tied to those audiences. But, you know, we do have the ability to rescind this procedure in the future as, as we do get those options hammered out, so. Does anyone have any other questions on the motion that's on the table? Yes, Ms. Zelenok, go ahead.
I'm not sure it's a question specifically for this motion. I do have a question though, is, as we continue with the Zoom meeting, when the public speak, speaks, is it possible to promote them to panelists? And then, so that, you know, we do have some visual. They obviously can see us, but we can't see them. And then after they speak to un-promote them? Would that be a policy that we could entertain and move forward with?
That's, that's interesting. I, I think that it, it could be. I think we have to be probably very clear with them that their video could, could be displayed. probably very clear with them that their video could, could be displayed, uh, once they're promoted to panelists. Um, you don't want people to be accidentally have their video displayed, but
I mean, maybe we give them an option.
We could stop the meeting so the video is turned off by default.
Yep. And then ask them if they would like to be promoted so they could be seen and give them the option. And if they do, then we could promote them so that it doesn't catch them off guard.
I like that. Mr. Nelson?
Um, just, just, uh, a lot of, a lot of schools have been adapting to, uh, the hybrid meetings with schools. And I, I've actually been to several, uh, several U of M's classrooms to see, um, like how they've done that. And they have these big TVs on the floor, um, uh, so the teacher can have both a hybrid meeting and see the students via Zoom as well as the students in the classroom at the same time. And I think potentially down the road, having some screen where we can interact with the audience, um, whether it be on the ground or something, um, that we can see them if they want their video shown would be a great step for the, uh, moving forward to kind of integrate a hybrid system into play. Um, all in all, I think we have to look into the cost first of doing something like that.
Yeah, these Zoom rooms are pretty cheap to run once you pay for the hardware. But Ms. Otto?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say because we, uh, installed in our front office, we installed Zoom Conference. And that is exactly like what Josh explained. We have three training rooms. Uh, one trainer is in one room and they're, uh, and we could have up to 150 people that we train all at one time. Um, it's, it's really amazing. Everybody hears and sees the same thing that the person is doing, large screens. Um, we even can do it from anywhere in our, uh, in our offices to our conference rooms. Um, it, it is really amazing. I did give Ken some pricing that we used. I don't know exactly if it would work for the township. Um, but like Ken said, once you get the equipment, the, the rest of it is pretty easy.
Yeah, and it's, it's very cost effective. I mean, the, the cost for the Zoom rooms is just really, really great. I mean, uh, I will say also, each of our, each of our boards in the township have to adopt a similar policy as to how they're going to operate, um, or a similar procedure. Uh, that is one thing Mr. Fink did communicate to me that each board has to adopt a procedure. So, this is a procedure for our board, but, uh, I will be, once, uh, we do what we do this evening, uh, I'll communicate that to the chairs of the other boards. Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Manley. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is the consideration of recreational retail and provisioning center 180 day renewal. Uh, a lot of information in your packets. Um, well, actually, a lot of information, uh, covered rather by Ms., uh, golly, and, um,
No, Conneke.
I'm, thank you.
Conneke.
Julie, Conneke.
Julie.
Ms. Conneke. Uh, and I think Ms. Conneke is here with us. Let me promote her to panelists and she can address, hang on, there she is. Hey, welcome, Julie. Thanks for joining us this evening.
You're welcome, Ken. Thanks for having me. Um, so I'll keep my introduction pretty short. I'm sure there are a lot of questions. Um, but what we really just wanted to do for you all is to give you a, a big picture overview of where all these applicants are at. But before I jump into that, I do want to just, uh, step back and talk about, uh, the conditions that were attached to these conditional use permits and the intention behind them. So, um, there were several conditions that were recommended in our initial conditional use permit reviews that were accepted by the Planning Commission and then forwarded to the Township Board. So, um, that included, uh, securing site plan approval, which all the applicants have done, um, buttoning up community benefits agreements, which I'll let, uh, Ms. Fink speak to. I know that those have been in process. I'm pretty sure they're all, um, pretty close to set at this point. Um, and then there was a provision that we had in there for getting township, county, and state agency approvals, um, with it, and when, within a recommended timeframe of 180 days from the conditional use permit approval. Um, we considered that clock to have started when the decision was final on that. So when the Township Board accepted the minutes from the meeting at which they made the motion, so that would have started on October 13th. So we're about at the end of that 180 days, uh, where we stand. Um, that provision really was about making sure that the applicants moved forward with the process, right? Um, we wanted to see each of them working towards establishing the use. Um, that said, that 180 days was completely arbitrary. At the time, we really didn't know how long it takes to establish this, and we certainly didn't know how long it would take. Um, once the state and the county both started taking months and months and months to, uh, even schedule appointments or get back to folks, uh, in light of COVID procedures. So, um, some of these, uh, approved applicants have made more progress than others. That said, not all conditions were the same. Some of them had a much, uh, shorter list of things to do, um, than others. And, uh, we feel that our recommendation, uh, here would be for each of them to receive an additional extension. We're recommending another 180 days. Um, currently, a conditional use permit, um, doesn't have an expiration period, uh, as dictated by the zoning ordinance. As a point of comparison, though, a site plan approval is valid for 365 days. It's valid for longer than that once you pull building permits. But that additional 180 days would roughly align with their site plan approvals. Um, but fall short of that, you know, 500 days you get into if you pull building permits. Um, I think that that's the fairest way to do it. Each of these applicants who was subject to the same conditions and all have not yet met the conditions are granted the same extension. We have also reached out to the tabled marijuana facility applicants. Each of them has indicated that they wish to keep their application with the township act, uh, active, um, knowing that a likely outcome would be that they would be further tabled. So our recommendation there would be to further table those applications, um, for 180 days or until the township considers that again. Um, that's the same recommendation we made back when these applicants were initially tabled. So that's my, my general overview there. Um, and I'm happy to answer additional questions. And I'm sure, um, Ms. Fink can chime in as well.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. Does anyone have any? Yes, Ms. Chick.
So I don't have a question as much as I have a request. Um, I, apparently there's been a lot of confusion about how or when to communicate any updates and who that update is supposed to go to. Um, and so I think that we need, or the planner, if, uh, Julie, you wouldn't mind to, uh, put something together to, um, establish a timeline where updates are submitted to you and that those can be, um, I don't think we need them unless they get to the point where they're at at the end of their 180 days if we extend them, um, just to make sure that the building department knows and you know exactly where they are in their status on these issues. But something has to be established because it was very obvious that the, um, applicants didn't know, you know, how they were supposed to do or who they were supposed to talk to.
Absolutely. Um, I, I think that's an excellent plan and it would also help our staff stay more organized. You know, we've been communicating with the applicants. Um, you know, many of us, Mary Bird, Mariah, myself, um, in kind of a piecemeal fashion, it would also help us stay organized and communicate with the applicants. You know, we gave them a heads up about a month ago that this would probably be on the board meeting agenda. Um, but I myself didn't have confirmation of that until yesterday. So, um, keeping nice, uh, tight schedules, not just for, uh, keeping on top of where their approvals are at, um, but then also as things are going to come back to the board, I think will be helpful moving forward.
So how often do you think you need to know or get information from them that's helpful to you?
I think probably a monthly check-in unless there is something more urgent that they, um, participate now. You know, obviously, they all have their own, um, timeframes for build-out that they're trying to stick to and they'll be in conversation with the building department as those things progress. If it's less than a month in between, needed communications, but a monthly check-in I think would be good. Um, that's something I would like to coordinate with the building department, though, first before we, we establish that timing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Yeah, I think, uh, I, I got a quick comment and then I'll go to Ms. Zelenok and then Ms. Otto. Um, you know, I, I think what's, what's important is that, uh, that there is a scheduled check-in. I mean, this is the first time, uh, we've gone through this process, uh, for these types of applicants. Uh, certainly, uh, it's my understanding from conversations I've had with Ms., uh, Ms. Conneke and Ms. Fink, that, uh, you know, at the same time, we're learning and understanding, uh, how these deadlines and timeframes work, uh, not just in COVID times, but in the industry itself, uh, that we're working in. So, uh, so, so certainly, uh, you know, uh, it's been an educational step as we've gone forward. But, uh, Ms. Zelenok, go right ahead, please.
My follow-up on what Ms. Chicken, as well as what you've said, Mr. Dignan, is, um, the applicants indicated they weren't told about, told about this meeting. And the question to me is, who should have informed them? Because when I look at the agenda item request form, it says that the project deadline was April 13th, 2021, and it indicates, um, Ms. Conneke, that you were the requister. So, um, I think we need to make sure that the applicants are informed. The agendas come out on Thursday, that they are informed, um, properly and timely, that they are going to be on the agenda or something concerning them and their business will be on the agenda. So going forward, who will take care of that?
Um, I, I think that that really squarely falls on my shoulders coordinating better, though, with, uh, the township supervisor and with township manager, uh, soon, saw office. Um, like I said, this was something that I, I did myself didn't have confirmation that it was going to be on the agenda. So I just tried to tell people that most likely it's going to be the first meeting in April. Um, but it, if, if it's a planning-driven agenda item, I am happy to take the lead on that. Um, and we'll, we'll just have to coordinate better moving forward. I mean, that's totally on my shoulders.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, the next thing, I believe the applicant said, um, RTMC or Northern Trellis, one and the same. I, I'll usually refer to them as, um, Northern Trellis. They indicated that they gave Ms. Fink the community outreach in December. Um, obviously, I don't think Ms. Fink, you were there to respond. And I was, I'm wondering, Ms. Fink, if you have actually received that.
Uh, yes, we've been going back and forth about a community benefits agreement. As far as I'm concerned, it's ready for whatever the next step of approval is.
Okay, thank you. That, um, answers my questions. Thank you very much, both of you.
Ms. Zelenok, does, Ms. Fink, does that also, uh, go for the other two applicants as well?
The, um, the agreement, I always get the names confused too, because it's, hang on one second while I deal with this barking dog before it makes us all crazy.
Okay. 2021.
Welcome to the Zoom world.
She's 16 and she has an anxiety disorder. So when I close the door, she gets really stressed out. So, sorry about that. Um.
To Green Guys Group and, uh, Pure Buds?
Yes. So I believe that Green Guys Group is also complete and ready to go. I don't think I have confirmation from their council on that, although he and I have worked on that together. Pure Bud, um, I have reached out and, and have not, that's 100% on me. I've not completed my end of that agreement, but it is in the works.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Ms. Otto?
Okay, um, I am, I was very concerned that the applicants were not aware that it was on the agenda tonight. Um, it, by what we're hearing, it also is apparent that, um, that Julie or McKenna was, uh, given this, uh, agenda item at the last minute. So she wasn't aware that she had to reach out to them either. So I'm, I really feel that we have to be more responsive, not only to, uh, these three applicants, but any applicants that come before us that want to do business within our township. Um, I am going to support, uh, having the 180 days for all three entities, only because all three of them are not complete. Um, I find it pretty, um, I did not appreciate calling out one over the other, uh, in the report. Um, and I really feel that you stick to the facts, you provide the facts, and then it's the board's decision as to how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. This, this actually came in, in, uh, the end of February. Uh, the discussion started with McKenna that this needed to be put on the agenda and needed to come forward. Um, and Julie, it was actually you folks that said this would be the date that it would have to be on the agenda. Uh, that was discussed in March, um, early March. So, uh, you know, here or there, obviously there was a big breakdown of communication that took place. Um, I, I hope that we can put a system in place that ensures that that doesn't happen with us going forward, uh, with these folks. Uh, certainly, uh, the information that was provided by the folks from Northern Trellis over the past, uh, I'll say three weeks because it was at our last meeting and then information that was, uh, supplied with updates, uh, over that, the, uh, status as to their items, even from your, uh, April 6th memo, uh, is not, that, that, there, there's different than what was indicated there. Uh, that they, uh, while they may not be on track physically with the building, uh, in the way that the other applicants are, uh, their forward progress, uh, is, is, is consistent with an applicant going forward. And, um, you know, in, in that sense, uh, I think Ms. Otto raises a good point. Um, I'm, I'm not enthusiastic about, uh, proving 180 days. I, I think I'd like to see this done in 90-day increments, but, um, on, only because, uh, it sounds like the big obstacles are out of the way, uh, or the biggest obstacles are out of the way for, uh, the other applicant. And I believe that the next 90 days, we should see substantial progress, especially in regards to just addressing the items that were part of the conditional use. Um, you know, the items that are part of the conditional use seem like they will be, uh, I, I don't know. I, I, I'd like to have them back before the board in 90 days and see where they're at again. Um, but we don't need to see them monthly, but that's my thought. Ms. Chicken, then Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I would, I, I would mind an update in 90 days, but I think it's, I think an additional 180 days, um, because as Ms. Conneke said, you know, this is new to all of us and we were little, it was just a recommended amount of time that we gave them from the Planning Commission. It wasn't something that we knew they were going to have to be done in 180 days because we didn't know and, and we still don't know. So I think that we need to be a little more forgiving and a little more generous and, and, um, uh, as we would with any other business and give them the 180 days the same we would give the, um, table. I think it fair is fair that they get both. Or if you're going to give 90 days to the applicants and you give 90 days to the, um, uh, table, but, um, I'm with 180 days.
Hey, Ms. Otto?
So the question is, is that if we do give them 180 days and they come in before that, um, is there anything that would stop them from getting their, uh, getting their approval sooner? Or would they have to wait until that 180 days is up before, uh, approval was given? Or would they have to wait until that 180 days is up before approval was given?
I can try to field that one. So the conditional use permit has been approved. The timeframe is for them to meet all of the conditions of approval. So whenever they hit that point, they're done. They can establish their use. At this, at this point, many of them are getting to the point where they're waiting on state agencies that, you know, they're not waiting on the township board any further. They're trying to get their schedule and establish the use.
So like with any business that comes into our township, they're at the mercies of other entities, such as governmental entities, in order to get their permits done. So we've been there, we've gone through that process ourselves, and we understand what that is. So I would be willing to give them 180 days.
Any other discussion? I would just like to see them come back in 90 days myself. I, you know, I think that the other question is, what if 180 more days pass and they still haven't met the conditions of their conditional use?
Then we revisit it then.
Yeah, but what, what do we, but what's, what's the point of the 180 days if there's no set thing? You, 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 you know, we chose to pick winners and losers in this, in the marijuana argument, when we decided to go against the planning commission's recommendation and change the number of licenses that could be issued in our township. So the board chose to do that, so then they chose to pick winners and losers. And now you're saying that you're, you know, if we put in place deadlines, and I understand the first deadline was new, we were learning and is arbitrary. But if you put in an arbitrary another 180 days, you have the, the winners getting another 180 days and losers being told, well, it's 180 days, but it might be 360 more days, or it might be 720 more days. We don't know, because we're not going to put, we're not going to set anything in as saying what's required. So is it required that they meet their conditions by the next 180 days? Or is it, or does it mean, or does it not mean anything? That, I guess that's my question. And I guess I'd ask Ms. Fink, if you, you know, if you could weigh in, if you don't believe it's political, if you could weigh in on the, I just think 180 days is arbitrary, because it's not, there's nothing that's required of them in 180 days. And there's nothing if they don't meet it.
Well, they, they would be in the same position they're in today. Either you would be rescinding their conditional use, or you would be extending it. So I, I, I mean, I think, I think there is a, there is something that they have to accomplish within the 180 days. I mean, it could be extended again, but you have to decide whether or not that's something that you'd want to do at the time. I, I think that, I mean, I, I feel like the progress that they've made, I think it was Julie who said that they, it seems like they've done the hardest parts, and they should be able to get this done in 180.
I would hope.
I think that's a reasonable expectation. I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you, Ms. Chicken, then Ms. Otto.
No, I actually have a question probably for Mariah. So their application is only good for one year, correct?
Right.
It couldn't go beyond 365 days, right, or can they?
Uh, that's, I think that's actually a question for Julie, because she was looking at that earlier today, and that I was looking at a different section of the ordinance for tonight's meeting. Julie, can you answer that question? I know the site plan expires in 365, but is it conditional use, automatic?
Application expire.
Application, yeah.
I am not sure about the conditional use application. Off the top of my head, it might be related to the marijuana application. Let me see if I can find an answer for you quickly.
Okay.
And that was my same question.
That's a great question, Ms. Chicken and Ms. Otto. Thank you for bringing that up.
So can I make a motion to extend 180 days to RTMC Enterprise, Northern Trellis, Pure Blood Development LLC, Pure Bud, Green Guys Group Incorporated slash Treehouse Wellness, with conditions?
Okay, motion by Chick. What conditions, Ms. Chick?
As listed in the, the first approval from the planning commission and the board.
I'll support if nobody's supporting.
So motion by Chick and supported by Otto. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Nelson?
I just have a question. So basically, at the end of the 180 days, unless, unless the application is only for a year, which this, I think, I think my vote would depend on that. It's not necessarily required, and we could just be revisiting the same question 180 days from now.
Right.
Would it be, would it be possible to basically say it's required? I mean, 100, 100 years, 360 days to get all this together is kind of a long time. I feel like, I'm kind of with Ken, I think it could be done in 90. Like, like, could, could we put in an amendment, maybe, to say, to say that they have to have this stuff together by 180 days? Or would that go against the contracts?
And is there already a motion on the table?
There is a motion on the table.
So is.
No question about a, with a legal question about an amendment.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, you certainly could say 180 days and no extensions beyond 180, if that's what you're asking, Mr. Nelson. I don't, I don't think that there's any reason that you couldn't say that. I guess I would, I guess I would caution you that, again, we're not sure. I, I think that, that, I think 100, I think 365 days is enough. But we're not sure, because we're not the people who are trying to get the permits. You know, I've, I've never tried to get a marijuana establishment up and running somewhere. So I, well, I think it's a nice idea to try to have an endpoint at that. I, I also think that it's always a good idea for the board to leave themselves some flexibility.
I, my concern is that ultimately, the, we, we obviously made this somewhat competitive, and we chose three out of a list of others. And not having a definite thing is not a, not a good messaging sign, I think, at least from my perspective, towards, towards other people or towards, towards the people that we disapproved in terms of coming here. We could continuously extend this thing forever if it, if the application's valid for more than a year or something like that. I just feel like pushing things down the road is probably not the road I want to go down right now. I might have an amendment in just a minute, but give me some time.
Mr. Nelson, Mr. Moko, and then Ms. Chick.
I just want to say, at the end of the day, it's our discretion. If we extend them 180 days this time, we don't have to extend them the next time. So, you know, that's, that's our job. So that's all I got.
Ms. Chick.
Yeah, so my other comment or only comment, I guess, would be, would we do that for any other business? I know that we have done this at the planning commission level, where you can, even if they don't finish some of the conditions, you can still approve them with conditions to go forward. So I just don't want to be discriminating against a certain kind of business and putting a timeline on them that we wouldn't put on anybody else. That's my comment.
That answers the question I was kind of looking, thank you, Ms. Chick.
This is not any other business, because this is not any other business, because we've chosen to tell three people, you have to wait and see. And we don't do that with other businesses. We don't, we don't say to a restaurant,
We do with liquor licenses.
Only you two restaurants can go in, you other three have to wait to see if these two restaurants can get everything in order and open up. We don't tell those other three restaurants, they can't open up either. We don't do that.
With other licenses, though.
Liquor licenses are controlled by the state, not by us.
Then we shouldn't, we should have denied them, and then we wouldn't have this, so. I, I.
Again, we've, we've created a mess.
Well, we're trying to help.
We regulated it.
Okay, Ms. Conneke, were you able to find anything on that, or not at this time?
I do not see anything in the ordinance or either the marijuana facilities application or conditional use permit application speaks to the expiration of the application itself. There's also no expiration on a conditional use permit. Generally speaking, that runs with the land. The license, the actual marijuana facilities license is valid for one year. But that's the only timeframe that I could find in those materials.
And those licenses haven't been issued yet, right? Those licenses are not issued until everything else is met.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Nelson?
I, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment and just add at the end to not go beyond 180 days.
There's a amendment out there to not go beyond 180 days? Is there support for the amendment? Amendment dies due to lack of support. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
No.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Passes six, one.
Thank you. The only reason I voted no is I think we should have had them come back at 90 days.
Okay.
So now, Ms. Fink, is there, do we need to address the applicants that were
Yes.
postponed?
So I, I believe that, that Julie has reached out to all three of them and that they have asked that their applications remain tabled. So one of the reasons that we, one of the reasons that tabling was proposed 180 days ago and, and was asked again is if those applications are denied, they can't apply again for 365 days. So we're, although it's some, sometimes it might appear that we're making them wait, we're actually giving them a little more flexibility there, because they're not bound by that strict 365 days before they could apply again, just for some clarity. So, so yes, I, you should do, you should make another motion to keep those three applicants tabled.
And tabled or postponed?
Well.
Don't you want to extend them?
Tabling is for the same meeting, am I correct?
Tabling is, is, the way I read tabling is until you bring it up again. If you prefer postponed, I'm fine with that.
They were initially tabled, maybe we should just stick with tabling. Is that okay? Mariah?
I, I, I believe it's fine, yeah.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to give an extension to GS Ashley LLC, Michigan Pure Green LLC, and Pure Roots LLC for 100, an extra additional 180 days.
From support.
Motion by Chick, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Zelenok.
I would like to make a friendly amendment to add, or until the township board considers it again.
I'll support that.
Amendment by Zelenok, supported by Nelson, that it contain until, or until the township addresses it again. Is, any discussion on the amendment?
The reason I added that motion is, or that, or have asked for that friendly amendment in case something comes up and we maybe don't want to wait the entire 180 days. Maybe there's something that allows us to maybe address it in sometime less than 180 days. Instead of saying.
And that, sure.
I think it gives us more flexibility.
So just so I understand, like you're saying, like if one of the applicants that we just approved another 180 days, if something happens and they're not able to complete and they have to back out or whatever, that we can discuss the other three that have been tabled at that time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on the amendment? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll on the amendment?
Yep. Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Say it again, Josh.
Okay, Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Amendment passes. Now we, any other discussion on the motion? Another thing I will say is, in light of us having voted in the affirmative for 180 days on the extension of the conditional use, I'll be supporting this motion. Go ahead and call the roll, Ms. Manley.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Ms. Fink, Ms. Conneke, thank you for your time this evening. We do appreciate it. I would ask Ms. Conneke to stay back if you could, in the event that there's a question or comment for you on the agenda item that's still forthcoming. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fink. Yep. All right. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a request from Todd Bake in regards to waiving of the fees necessary to combine two parcels.
I'd like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion, the township waive fees to combine parcels if the applicant has been recently granted a waiver and property tax credits.
I'll support.
Support. Okay. Motion by Zelenok, supported by Nelson. Discussion, Ms. Otto?
Okay, one reason I can't support this is the person hasn't filed an application yet. So we do not really know what the fees are. According, the fees could be anywhere between 100 and, 550 to 600 for just the initial application. And then looking at how the house sits on the lot, it may have to go to the ZBA to review. And they won't know about that until tomorrow. So, and that could be additional fees. Normally, what we do is we take the application, then the patient asks to have the fees reduced or waived at that time, and then the board considers it. I feel that it's inappropriate, no matter if he does fall within that tax credit or not, that we don't know what we don't know. And we need to have that information in front of us. There was, this actual situation has gone back since July of 2020, and brought to the assessor back in August of 2020. And this has sat in our township's manager's desk for months before it was brought back up again in January. So to me, I think that we just have a discussion with, with the gentleman and say, if you really want to do this, file an application, then it's brought to the board to waive the fees. We have to do it in the proper order.
So I have a question of, who would have advised him that he needed to fill out an application? And why hadn't he, before this came up on our agenda?
I would assume that that wall was dropped in September of 2020, when it was left on the township manager's desk for months.
So there, Jackie, you said that there's a question about the ZBA that it'll, it'll be answered tomorrow, or?
Yeah, Mary Bird said that she was going to talk with Vadia tomorrow to see if it would go to the ZBA. The reason is, is that one of the lots, which is 1010, lot 1010, the house sits right on the edge of the lot, which is 11009, which is combined. It does make sense to combine them. And I'm almost positive that, you know, that it's going to go through. It's the right thing to do, because if he tries to sell the house without the one property, he can't do it, because it's right, the house is like exactly on the property line.
It's actually a foot over.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, so he really can't sell the house without the other property. It makes sense to combine it, but I don't know if it has to go to the ZBA to combine it because of the setbacks.
So is there a fee to file the application, or is this just a matter of him doing paperwork? And?
There is a fee to file the application, which I think it is anywhere, and I spoke to Tom today, our assessor, um, it's anywhere between 550 to 600. That's the initial fee. But I don't know if there's another fee for it to go to the ZBA. So then we would have to decide, okay, are we just doing one fee? And then for the ZBA, you have to come back, the, the ZBA cannot waive fees. They have to come back to the board and ask to have that waived as well. So do we have him do it all at one time? Or do we? Have him do it twice? I don't know.
So can we put that on the next agenda?
Well, my understanding from my conversations with Vidya is it would be $450 to $500. Uh, we talked, we've talked extensively about this over the last month. The problem is he doesn't have the money to file that.
Right.
Oh, I get that.
The other thing is, is no matter what, he'd be required to do a, to do a survey. So the, the question has come up of can he even afford to do a survey? Uh, but the request from him is whether or not the township would even consider allowing him to merge the parcels, uh, no cost to the town, no cost from the township to him. We will have a cost of $500 that will go to planning and zoning. If we waive this.
It's $500 for the application and then $50 for each lot. That's how it says in the, in the fees.
Okay, she told me 450 plus 50 for the second lot, so five.
No, it was 50, 500 plus 50, that's what Tom said. So, um, you know, I don't have a problem in even doing this, I just think it has to be done in the right order. Cause then all of a sudden, what happens to the next person?
Right, and you're making a lot more conforming, not less conforming, so I'd be surprised if it had to go to the ZBA, because it's much, much, much more a conforming lot than it would be otherwise. So, um, yes, Ms. Manley?
Admit it.
You're muted, Ms. Manley.
Sorry, um, yeah, now from hearing what Jackie's saying, I don't think we have enough information.
Right.
I think we need to work with him to get completed what we need to get completed. I mean, a map would be great too, so we know what we're talking about.
We have all that, it was not supplied to the board.
Right, I don't feel there's enough information for us to do this, and again, is this going to be setting precedent? I mean, we're already waiving his taxes.
Well, there's a motion on the, there's a motion on the floor right now, I just want to remind the board, there is a motion.
This is a discussion, so.
It is. It is. Um, you know, I, I, I think that the way the motion was made by Ms. Zelenak, it's, it, it, it's, it definitely, uh, is limited and doesn't create precedence because it, it, it's, there's a lot of conditions that have to be, I mean, the condition of, of getting your, uh, property taxes waived is, is the, is the motion's condition. So Ms. Zelenak, you had comments?
Yes, well, that was my, is that it was, the motion was such that you would have to meet that specific criteria. And my understanding is we have one.
One.
Um, individual that meets that criteria at this point in time in the township. My next, um, comment is, um, he cannot file the, he has to file the application first. We will not take the application if he does not give us the money. That's my understanding. So he can't go to the next step without filing this application, and to file the application, he's going to have to give us $500. That's my understanding. And is that not correct, um, Ms., Mr. Dignan, in your conversations with Vidya and?
That was interesting.
He can't file the application, he has to give us $500. He's not going to be able to give us the $500. So he won't be able to file the application.
So we know for sure the total is 500, is that what you're saying, for sure?
I can only go by what has been put in the packet. And Mr. Dignan has been communicating with them, if you want to, you know, update the motion, actually, I didn't put a dollar amount in my motion. I just said that the applicant, the township waived fees to combine parcels if the applicant has been recently granted a waiver and property tax credit.
Right, and ours, and what I put on there was our anticipated cost is $500 to, to the township. So, Ms. Manley?
Okay, so if we pay, say, the $500 for the application, it goes and he gets told, I need a survey, it's going to cost $1,200. And he says, well, I can't afford that, so then are we, we're just out $500. Correct?
Well, we wouldn't have the expense, so, Ms. Zelenak?
So the application fee is only if he gets everything in?
The waiver of a fee versus the payment of a fee are two different things.
Okay.
The waiver of a fee is different than us paying the fee.
Okay, so who does that fee go to?
Uh, it would go to the planners when they reviewed the lot combination. That, I mean, that, that's where the, that's where the cost is incurred. The cost is incurred, it goes to planning and zoning, and the cost is incurred when they review the combination of the lots. If that doesn't happen, similar to, we, we had someone recently that didn't proceed forward with a request for, um, I don't remember if it was rezoning or, or, but we refunded their money minus the cost of the planner's fees that had been accrued so far.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
I would anticipate you would have the exact same thing here, if they never review a, a lot combination, because it never has the stuff necessary, um, we would not incur the full $500 fee. We, we may occur Vidya's review of it, you know, her, her overview of it, just to, just to see, oh yes, Mr. So-and-so, you need to have a site plan, you know? But that's not going to be the $500 fee, the $500 fee would come when the site plan come, or not site plan, but the, uh, survey comes in and she then goes through the full review.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's her or Julie that goes through that review, I think it's Vidya, but.
Okay.
So can we get them to waive the fees?
Yeah, I asked that.
Hi, Julie?
Maybe a pro bono, huh?
So.
Okay.
Ju- Julie, is that Vidya that, that would review, that when we have someone combining a lot, that's all done by Vidya, correct?
No, that would be done by me. Um, so just to clarify on the fee, the fee is $450 plus $50 per lot. So there are two lots to be combined into one.
Five hundred.
$50 for each lot, so 550. Um, Mary Bird does not forward me any application that is incomplete. So if he does not have his survey, if his, uh, full application is not in order, it's not going to go to me, we are not going to conduct our review and, and charge the township for that. And if something happened where we started a review, like Ken said, we, we get in touch with the township, we work that out, we, we don't charge the applicant for, or the township for, for something where the application is incomplete and withdrawn. Um, so that, that's how that would normally work on our end.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Otto?
So I would like to do a friendly amendment, uh, to include that not, that an application will need to be filed, um, and complete before we will waive the fees.
Okay, this is a proposed amendment by Ms. Otto.
I'll support that.
Supported by Manley, discussion. So we don't accept applications without the fees being paid. The township doesn't.
I get that, I get that, Ken, but we do, the same thing happens at the ZBA level, where they have to put their application in, and, and then it comes back to the township board and says, this gentleman wants to waive his, uh, his fees. We have the same exact thing that happens at the ZBA. So, um, it happens all the time, applications come in, all I'm saying is, an application has to be filed. I'm not going to give him, I'm not going to waive a fee if he doesn't file an application.
He doesn't have the $500, I think.
And it's a poverty exemption, that's what it is, so he can't.
You're not understanding.
With the paperwork.
We're, we're waiving a fee on nothing. If he never files that application, then.
There's never a fee to waive.
But I, my amendment says that he has to actually file the application for him to get the waiver.
Okay, all right, so if I understand right, your mo, your, your amendment is that, uh, that if the app, if, if the fee is waived, he, it's not waived until such time that he applies?
Exactly.
Gotcha, sorry, misunderstood it completely. Thank you for clarifying, awesome.
Can we make that the friendly amendment? I understand amendment.
Ms. Otto?
Yeah, that could be a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment?
Okay, Mr. Dignan?
All right, so we have an amendment.
I support, who supported it?
Ms. Manley did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Ms. Manley, can we vote on the amendment first, please?
Yep, Zelenak?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
So seven, zero on the amendment.
Any discussion on the motion?
Well, and, and if I may, I will actually make another friendly amendment to actually put the price so we know what dollars we're talking about. So I will put up, you know, up to $550.
I'll support.
Okay, there's amendment by Zelenak, supported by Chick, that the, uh, waive fees up to $550. Any discussion on that motion? On that amendment, rather? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll on that amendment?
Moko?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Belenak?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Okay. So we have, both amendments have passed, now we are undertaking the motion. Does everyone know what the motion is? Hey, just going to ask.
I know.
Any other discussion on it?
No.
Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep, Chick?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Belenak?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Moko?
Yep, yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
I make one more comment?
No.
No, I'm just going to make a comment. Um, in the past, we have had the same situation at the ZBA level where people cannot pay for their surveys. There are, um, uh, survey companies that will do this pro bono, so, um, and, and we have had that done before on the ZBA. So, um, I would suggest that if he can't get a survey done, as part of his application is to try to find one for him. Okay, that would do it for nothing.
I didn't know that that existed.
Yep.
Nice. Okay.
Mr. Dignan, um, Ms. Otto, do you have a list or a, um, some firms that you are aware of that does that, um, pro bono?
No, I don't, um, we probably have had it done twice in the eight years that I have been on the ZBA. So I would have to go check.
Right, it might be good information that we could share with the applicant.
All right, next item on the agenda is a consideration of issuing an RFP, uh, for, uh, an in-house planner or building official, zoning official. Um, it's, uh, this is the, the first step in us trying to figure out what we want to do in our building department for, uh, having a official in there. Um, the, uh, also, at the same time, uh, McKenna has provided us a proposal, uh, in regards to providing building services, uh, uh, including the services that are currently not being, uh, addressed, such as, uh, our, uh, inspections and everything to that effect. So, um, the table's kind of open for discussion if, uh, someone, yes, Ms. Chick? You're muted, Ms. Chick.
I just want to understand what this agenda item is asking us to do. Whose item was this, there's no name on it?
Well, we, uh, that's a great question. I mean, uh, this, this is an item that started back in November.
Yeah.
Um, and it was a, uh, the process of a lot of gathering of information and tons of papers by, from, uh, our former township manager, that were stacked up in regards to this agenda item issue. And, uh, the discussion, uh, from McKenna simply came out of a question, uh, that I had asked Julie in regards, and, and actually I asked Vidya, uh, initially, and I think, uh, Julie, did you put this together, or was it, I think it was Vidya that, uh, had requested it? No, you did not? Okay, so Vidya put this together, um.
Okay, so you're asking, you're asking for us to consider issuing an RFP for an in-house planning consultant slash zoning administrator?
This is just a discussion. This is not, I'm not asking you to, I'm just asking to have a discussion about what we want to do with our building department.
Okay, because there's, there's several items in the agenda that we kind of, um, okay, so my thoughts on the building department is we need to do this right the first time. Um, we need to get the people in place that we need, we need a planner, in-house planner, we need a zoning administrator, we need a building official and a code enforcement officer. We can combine, my thought, and actually I've been doing a lot of research myself and getting input from other, uh, managers and elected officials from other townships and zoning administrators, uh, but, um, we can combine my, uh, ideal that I would vote for is a planning, uh, in-house planning consultant slash zoning administrator, a separate building official, and of course we have a RFP for a separate code enforcement. Um, the combinations of trying to put them all three together or a different combination, uh, from what I'm hearing from other officials, and I, I actually went through the MTA to contact some of these people, uh, was it the, trying to do the zoning administrator slash, uh, building official is not a good idea. But anyway, so I'm all about getting somebody hired and getting our building department up to snuff so that it runs efficiently and effectively with the good people in place. So, and sooner the better.
Thank you, Ms. Chick, I concur on, on most of those sentiments, definitely. Mr. Moko?
I personally don't know that we need to hire another township employee for this position right now, um, and then incur all the costs and benefits when we can use contractors to do the same job. Um, I don't know that there's enough work to keep someone busy at this point, but if the, if the times change and there is a lot more, uh, action going on in town, I'm sure I would change my mind.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Ms. Manley?
I unmute.
There you go.
I think right now, um, to kind of, you know, go along with Mr. Moko was saying, it's like, do we have enough going on right now where we need this? And then again, if we do set this person out, I mean, we don't have a manager right now, there's nobody really leading the, the building department. Is there any, going to be any guidance for this person? I mean, I kind of think for right now, my opinion is we kind of stick with McKenna and have them do what we need to do until we get the manager in place to actually pull this all together. I just don't know if we have the ability right now to add this onto our plate also.
Thank you, Ms. Manley.
Awesome.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Zelenak and then Ms. Chick?
So, um, in my perspective and talking to a few people is I think we need a building official slash zoning administrator. I think we could keep that person busy because the building official would also be able to do building inspections. And that we will be going in that's a vacant, uh, vacant position at this point in time. So, and I know, um, Ms. Chick and I have been in communication and we disagree on this, um, on the, on the. So and I know Miss Chick and I have been in communication and we disagree on this on the on the combination. Just for one, that's one board member I've spoken to, and we've been talking back and forth. My my goal is when someone comes to our township, I want them to be able to talk to somebody that can help them and say, yes, you meet the zone. I know we have someone coming in, you know, Vidya is available four hours a week. I don't think that's enough. You will need to, you know, do this to meet the building codes. I think the fact that we have to wait and get communication back and forth, most of it's done by email, maybe phone calls, maybe not. And I understand if he's the individual may be out doing a building inspection, they won't be there. But to elevate our service, I think we need someone in-house that people can talk to, make available. And I think that we will move forward with projects, be it as simple as a house, be as complex and maybe, you know, 75 Barker. So when we go and someone wants to talk about 75 Barker, they have a proposal. First thing you're going to have to say, does it meet the zoning? Next thing they might want to do is talk to the building code person to say, hey, what about this fan, that fan, this? I think it will move projects faster and will get, and I do believe the combination of a building official and zoning administrator will keep that person busy enough and there won't be the downtown. I think we will still need a outside planner, certainly for the larger projects and for depending on what the person can do. Some of the site plan reviews may need to go to the planner as well. So I have looked in the position, it runs between about $35 an hour to $45 an hour. I think this will help make projects move along faster. The clock when someone comes in doesn't start, you know, ticking. Well, you know, we got to pay your fees and you want to talk to somebody, it's going to cost you money and you go back and forth. And if we get a bad product, it's a redo and more. So I'm pretty much dissatisfied and have been since I have been a board member with how the process is working or not working. And in addition, there was a time when we did have a building official and a zoning administrator back in, I believe, the late 90s, maybe the early 2000s. So that is the position I think we need. And I think it will elevate our service to our residents as well as to be residents. So that's my position.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak. Miss Chick?
So as far as the busyness of the township, if you talk to those to Mary and Vidya and Julie, they all will tell you that Northfield Township is busy. They have things going on all the time down there. That's why Mary needs more help. That's why they're they're training Stacy to help out as well. But I and this is from our zoning administrator regarding, I think people are getting the building official and building inspector as two different people. It's one person. Building official is the building inspector. And the reason the planning commission hasn't been able to move on some of the things that they've been getting to do is we don't have a building official in place. We don't have a township manager and they're so important for getting our ordinances and other things that the planning commission has to do. We need input from them because it doesn't make sense for the planning commission to create an ordinance to have a building official come in and say, no, I want to do it this way. So we have to hire somebody or contract somebody out, somebody who can help. This is from our zoning administrator. A built a building official is a trade expert. Their education includes building codes and construction requirements. Nothing in their scope of expertise involves planning and zoning. It has to be a separate position. A building official can do code enforcement to a certain extent. Planning and zoning can be done by one person, but the person filling this has to be extremely experienced. Knowledge of just zoning ordinance and site plans will not be enough. They have to keep updated on legislation changes and more. That's our zoning administrator. And that was exactly what I was getting from two of their managers, another supervisor township and a clerk from another township. So I I we hire hecklers and we listen experts for a reason because they know the field. And I would I'm going to listen to them in in trying to make our building department the best it can be. That's all.
Thank you, Miss Chick. Anyone else have comments? I will tell you this, I work I work in three other communities for part of my profession and two of those communities have a combination person that that is primarily the building official, but does do their light planning and 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 zoning. They obviously larger projects, they do farm out to a planner. But for for the most part, the day-to-day operations of your building department, your site plan reviews for your homes, your site plan reviews for improvements, those kinds of things do run through those individuals. And then only for large projects that you have to go out to a planner. Though those those out of the three communities I work in a lot, those two communities are the most efficient. Certainly. You know, when you're not waiting for your turn, per se, at the wheel for the for that person to come in and do their hours with your community, someone gets better service. So I think we do owe it to the folks of Northfield Township to to have someone in place there that can drive that. Certainly, they're going to need to work in harmony with the township manager, but I would be if we were to look for someone for this position, I would want this person to lead the department, lead the building department. You know, work with and plan for things, work heavily, obviously with our ZBA, our planning commission, our I I think that there would be a cost benefit to the township substantially in regards to the dollars that we do pay today. No, that's my that's my 10 cents worth. So Miss, you're muted.
So I just want, because I really think I don't think because our board members know exactly what happens in the building department, how important it is to have the right people in the right positions and dedicated to those positions. It might cost and and you can hire them part-time. You don't have to pay them full-time. But okay, this is from a manager. You can find a zoning and building inspector, but a qualified planner with knowledge of zoning law and current practice is unlikely. These are two separate modes of training. You may as well throw out the planning stuff. I don't recommend any overlap. Even building and zoning should be separate. Too much potential for a dictator complex. A clerk from Watersmeet Township, they actually hired a zoning administrator who did building inspections. And they found out after a while it was too much person for one or too much work for one person to adequately adequately address zoning application permits, building application permits and violations of both. As a result, the zoning violations seem to receive the last attention. So if we if we give them this one person too many duties and he's not good at all or an expert in all three of them, something's going to suffer and I don't want our building department to be inadequate anymore.
Yeah, I think violations have to be addressed through an ordinance enforcement officer. I'll just tell you that. Just just I'll go into that later.
Building inspections. I can't see a planner doing building inspections. It's not their experience.
Yeah. But you needed, yeah, I mean.
Not anybody works their song anyway. That's not what they go to school for. So.
I don't think what we have is working.
No.
So, you know, I don't know. Do we come back with a recommendation?
There's one this out there for the board to define the direction.
Right. I'm not for a planning and zoning administrator, so.
I would ask our board members to talk to the people that work in the building department. They will tell you what they need.
Yep, I think that could be a good approach.
Is there anything else on this item? Next step.
Well.
Ms. Otto?
I just want to make a comment. As far as the township manager, we're addressing it. It's not far as the code enforcement. The Personnel Committee is addressing that as well. We have received applications on that. I think all you're looking at right now is the zoning administrator, the in-house planner, and the building inspector. I think those are the three things that you're looking at.
Right.
One question I and that will probably my questions will probably move into the other the other agenda item, but I think the confusion that I had with this one, this one was is that there was a lot of different types of positions in here. Not know exactly what we were looking at. We had one for economic and community development director or a community development. I didn't know what that was.
That's who they that's who they reported to. That's a zoning administrator planner.
Okay. And then we had the one that was a planner zoner administration, one just zoning administrator and et cetera. I I think what I probably would like to see is exactly that. What do we actually need? I would like to look at, you know, get what our people in-house need. We do know that we need a building inspector. We do know know that we need a code enforcement officer. We know that. Whether we need these people full-time or part-time, I think we're getting more to the point of that we have to do it full-time. Because we are getting more and more inquiries and more and more situations where we we can't keep up with it anymore. So at least for me, when in our last term, when we looked at this, the one thing that my one goal going into this term was I wanted to build out the building department because I think that we owe it to our community to have a solid department, not something that's Band-Aid or piecemealed. We have to have a solid department.
Well, and and the thing is, is I I we are obviously looking at the code enforcement officer. The building inspector, we don't have to rush into anything. We we do have our current building inspector for a short period of time, and we have an option with a current vendor we're working with if we have to have somebody in the short term. We're we're already finding ordinance enforcement officer. We're already finding a township manager. I mean, we're already, you know, dealing with finding, and then we're going to find a building official. I'm not so worried about the building inspections because we have something in place that we could use. Let's focus on the the real meat and potatoes of the building department and find the person to run the department to do the things that need to be done that are critical. You know, the ordinance enforcement officer is going to be an ordinance enforcement officer. Their job is to go out and make sure that things are being followed. The building inspector is a building inspector. It's, you know, the these people are accomplishing tasks. They're not defining the spirit of the department or the direction of the department and the things that are happening with the, you know, people who are coming in on a day-to-day basis to.
They're looking at building code.
That's it. Right. So, you know, I I feel like taking those two and saying, okay, we don't, those don't need our immediate attention because we're well, the bill the code enforcement does, you're finding, you guys are working on it. But let's focus on the meat is of the building department. That's going to be your your planning building official or what you define as that role. And I think it's important that that that's really where we concentrate on that. And between that and our township manager, I mean, that that's that those are pretty pretty hefty tasks. There's some heavy lifting that's got to go on there. So I mean, it's just my my thoughts on that. You know, we still don't have next steps to find on how we proceed there. Anybody got any suggestions?
Well, we did at one point in time, Mr. Dignan, start to other communities. Maybe we do that again. I know we went out to Webster and we went out to Green Oak. Maybe we pick some other ones as well and just again, see what their structure is. Dexter Salem, just to see what kind of structure they have, they have as well.
And who was the committee members on that one?
Miss Chick was one of them.
Miss Chick, myself, and Miss Bellinger.
Okay.
Yes. Miss Chick?
I don't I don't know that we need to kick this can down the road anymore. We've been trying to get the building department up to snuff for what Jackie, couple of years anyway. And it keeps well, let's do this, let's do that and let's, you know, but we need to act. I don't think talking to other communities actually helps unless they're the same population we are, same type of business that amount of business that we do. We went to Green Oak. They have a planning and a zoning administrator in one person and they have a separate building inspector official. I don't know what you want to call them. And and that's they're busy and those are full-time positions and 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 I I would I'm more inclined to listen to Green Oak than to go to Webster where they didn't hardly have anything going on. So I just don't know. And and I did reach out. So I don't know how much more reach out you want to do. I think we need to go out for an RFP for an in-house planner as soon as possible. If that person wants to do zoning administrating with it, fine. But we need to do we we need to take action.
That a motion?
I will make a motion to go out for an RFP for an in-house planner slash zoning administrator.
Okay. Supported by Otto. Discussion. Mr. Nelson?
Um, I I just wanted to say I'm I'm probably going to be abstaining from this simply because I I do want to do a little more research. I wouldn't be doing I wouldn't be against this, but I I would be more apropos if to this motion if we had like a list or something of all the duties and responsibilities we'd be expecting of this person. Do we have a list? I I looked through the from what I saw, I I didn't see like a full list. And before we put out an RFP, I just want, I guess I want more details.
Honestly, you could Google it. It's pretty standard for every position. Yeah.
Or look at the duties and responsibilities of any of those job descriptions that are in there. They're about they're about 90%. I mean, they're really.
And and furthermore, those those current tasks are do we know or do do we know who's handling those current tasks? And how much they're being impacted, how much time is being allocated to those tasks before we maybe go full putting out an RFP for someone full-time? Again, I I like the idea. I I just want to see a little more.
Julie is our planner right now and Vidya Krishnan is our zoning administrator. So we we have those people in place already.
Okay, okay. On a contract basis.
Yeah.
It's a okay, I I think I can support this.
And they can apply to.
Right. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Miss Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep. Dignan?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Moko?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley? No. Otto?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Is that four, three?
Yep.
Okay, who's going to do the RFP? The attorney?
Yeah, that was my next question.
I can ask the attorney about that. You're talking about Stacy, right? Miss Chick?
Yes.
Yes.
I will I will communicate that to Stacy tomorrow and have a conversation with her.
So Ken, would you want, I'm just going to say this, I don't want to add any more to our plate that we already have, but we have a lot. Would you want the Personnel Committee to?
I would love to. Love love to have them involved. Absolutely.
Okay.
Do you guys want to?
I'll make the motion to have the Personnel Committee work with the labor attorney to draft the RFP.
I'll support that motion. Motion by Otto, supported by Dignan. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, considering that two of your members on the Personnel Committee, I think voted against it. I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, the board made a decision.
Yeah.
Board moving forward. I mean, Miss Manley?
So what would that entail as far as working with the attorney? Are you talking about is interviewing people, picking? So what would that entail as far as working with the attorney? Are you talking about us interviewing people, picking people?
No, just drafting the RFP.
Okay. So just communicating with?
Reviewing the job description, the, the post that's going to be put out there, that kind of stuff. Okay. There's a motion on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Miss Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep. Nelson?
Abstaining.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Moko?
Yes.
So that passes.
Correct. All right. Next item on the agenda. Does anyone need a five-minute break?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll take a five-minute break. Well, actually, let's make it a seven-minute break. We'll convene at uh, ten eight, nineteen, ten nineteen.
Okay.
All right. Hope everybody's refreshed. Been a long one tonight.
Indeed.
Yes. Well, going to be calling on Mr. Wagner here uh, on this next item.
Then we have something else first. Building Department Services?
Hmm. Where's that? Hmm, no.
Yeah. Consider McKenna Associate proposed for conducting building inspections number five?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just did number four. Post an RFP for an in-house planner consultant.
I, okay. That wasn't supposed to be a separate line. I mean, it was gonna, it was part of the discussion we had.
I know we had a discussion, but it is a separate line and I think we need to make a motion or something.
Well, we don't have.
That's okay. I did.
Fairly.
Mr. Dockett, system so I could find all my stuff.
Great. All right. So next item on the agenda. Consider McKenna's proposal. So, so what they did is, is like I said, I was talking to Vidya. She was made aware that our inspector, building inspector was uh, not going to be with us in the future. And she offered to uh, provide us a proposal. And I said, go ahead. Um, you can provide it to us. So this is informational more than anything. She's provided the proposal to us to review and look at. I did not intend for us to take any action on this item uh, at all. Um, so it, it's here for informational purposes. Miss Otto, go ahead.
So what is our actual timeline?
It was in Kurt's. Let me see. Yeah.
May twenty eighth.
In the May.
Yep.
Looks before Memorial Day.
No. And the only thing, uh, uh, the only thing, um, the question that would come up about what if, does Pittsfield Township provide us any other services that would, would be ceasing? And that is no, that is not the case. So the only services provided uh, in that arrangement are Kurt's services for building inspections. Not electrical, may not any of the trade.
Okay. So my question too is, do we amend the current contract with the Pittsfield Township to exclude that?
No, that's the only thing we do at Pittsfield.
Oh, is that the only one that we do? I thought we, they, we had engineering.
No.
Too. Okay.
Anything with Pittsfield other than that.
My, my only request, Mr. Dignan, would be can we reach out maybe to Carl Mortman and see if they would be interested in doing it as well?
Sure.
Since they were our prior planning. And I do believe they offer that services. It'd be good to see if it's equal compared.
Sure.
I don't know.
I mean, once I.
And as, as I voiced my concerns in the past, I'm not a, a fan in this, our, our current planning firm. So not sure I want to give them more business.
I understand.
Next. Happy with the business I've been receiving.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zelenak. Miss Chick?
Yep. Uh, just a thought. Do you think we could reach out to Green Oak and see if their building inspector is not busy or, or could take us on for something?
It's not a bad idea.
They're next door.
Not a bad idea at all. This, that, that, thank you, Miss Chick. Miss Otto?
Another one would be O H M as well. Um, I know that they are our engineering firm.
Yeah.
But I don't know if they also have that as well.
I do with them either.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that, that certainly, as I said, this came out of a casual conversation with uh, Vidya and uh, we certainly can uh, send a note off to Carl Mortman, O H M, Green Oak Township. I'll probably just stop by there and have a conversation with Mark St. Charles and, and see what their thoughts are over in Green Oak. So, all right, great. So we'll move on to the next item. If, if, does anyone else have any questions on that item? No. Next item is in regards to the roads and the planning and the road commissions. Roads agreement for 2021. Obviously, things were done in a unorthodox fashion this year due to COVID. And uh, the way they've sent this stuff out, Mr. Wagner has had an opportunity to review the recommendations. Obviously, their recommendations are uh, far beyond our financial capabilities as always. So um, Mr. Wagner, did you want to share with us your thoughts? And then we'll go around to board members?
Sure. Uh, I, I don't, I didn't have any idea of kind of what the township's looking at for a budget. But what I did do was probably two and a half, three weeks ago, I met with Mike Masti, who is our supervisor for our area from the Washtenaw County Road Commission. And I kind of went over these. And then I also went around and drove each of these projects to check. And I would say that the two that I thought at that time needed attention the most would have been the Jennings Road from the end of the pavement to Kearney Road. Uh, that was in really bad shape the day I drove it. And then also uh, Six Mile Road. So basically from Lake Shore or the end of the pavement all the way to Nala Road. Again, at that time was the worst. Now, obviously, I don't think we're going to spend the kind of money that they're talking about. What, what Mr. Masti did make very clear to me though is it's, we can pick and choose parts. You know, if it's a quarter-mile project that they're showing, we can pick the hundred-yard section. And so we can pick and choose the different parts that we want to give attention. The other thing I didn't know, because I really haven't been involved in this in the last couple of years, was do we have any other combination projects uh, that we've had in the last couple of years with either Salem Township or Ann Arbor Township? With, so it would be Joy Road or Dixboro Road. I know at one time we were working on that. And then before, when I did have uh, participation in this, was around the time we were dealing with the, the highway construction. So we, we did spend a lot of time and effort uh, preparing like Nala Road because that is one of the main bypass roads. A north-south road when there's an incident on the highway. Um, so a-again, when I drove it, when I checked it, those two that I just had mentioned needed the most attention. I know we've given a lot of attention to Six Mile Road in the past. And to be honest with you and everybody else, I don't pick that because there's three board members that live in that area. And I didn't even know where Mr. Moko lived until after I had uh, you know, checked Jennings Road. That was just my honest opinion of what I saw when I drove these different projects. So that's my input.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it, Chief. Miss Otto and then Miss Zelenak.
I, I do believe that what really, and I'm just going to say this, what we've done in years past is we do give to dust control. I think that helps all the county roads with the dust control. Six Mile Road, um, I think it was at the end of the pavement um, where the pavement and the dirt meet. That has, that's very, very rough. It's been rough for years. And I think it does need to be addressed. The other one is Nala Road and to Seven Mile. While they did work on that stretch last year, for some reason, that one piece where it connects, where the, the pavement and the dirt connect, it just seems like every year there is tons of ruts. And it's all the way up to um, that homeowner's driveway. Between his driveway up until the corner of the road, that's all rutted area. And I, I know that they worked on it last year. That whole area. I don't know if we want to continue just going down on Nala Road. Uh, because last year they did six miles to eight, uh, to seven mile stretch um, last year. I don't know if we would want to do the five mile to six mile stretch or to do some other part on Nala Road to cover for that. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Thank you, Miss Otto. Mrs. Zelenak and then Miss Chick.
Yes. Um, I was just going to say, I think, um, Chief, when we had talked, you had mentioned something about number 12, the Nala Road to the approach to Seven Mile Road. And Miss Otto just mentioned that too, where the dirt becomes um, between pavement and the dirt.
That's true. I did, um, I did notice that that was in pretty bad shape as well.
Yeah. And I agree with Miss Otto. I think when we had chosen that project last year, we had thought that was going to be addressed. And obviously, that Yeah. And I agree with Ms. Otto. I think when we had chosen that project last year, we had thought that was going to be addressed. And obviously, that did not happen. And we always do the dust control. And over the last four years, we've upped it to certainly over the last three years to three times. And I think that is good. I think also the board in the past has tried to try to finish sections of the road. So we last year did six mile to seven mile on Nala. So I think it might be good to do either five mile to six or nursery to five, if we want to continue that approach. So that's, and I think typically the county matches, like sixty-seven thousand between the road match and the drain match. And then we at least usually do that amount to get the matching money. And then if we want to do anything above that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zelenok, Ms. Chick.
Yeah, what I don't see on here, they put the dust control on, but we also did limestone last year and dropped limestone in several places as needed throughout the year. In fact, they just put some more down on Six Mile and a little bit on Nola. But I like Chief's idea, or you said, Mr. Masti's idea about you doing sections in the road that typically wash out or look really bad, because it's, it always seems to be the same place on the same road that goes bad. So instead of spending on the money to do the whole road that might not need it, can we just do sections on the road that typically have an issue? And, and you are correct, Ms. Zelenok, that Nola approached the Seven Mile Road. They said they worked on it last year. They did nothing. And it's, it's just as bad as it ever was, even after they said they fixed it. And I do know that Jennings Road does get bad as well. And they've been complaining about that for a long time. So.
Yes, Ms. Otto.
So to go back what Janet said on Jennings Road. Bill, is it the pavement where the pavement and the dirt meet? Is that where the worst part is on Jennings Road?
No, not necessarily where they meet, but just that whole section. You know, if that, if that section from the pavement to Kearney Road is a mile, there's probably four or five hundred yard sections that could be done that could help that road tremendously. But it's put, that is putting a Band-Aid on the issue. Where what, what they show here, which is obviously more money than the township probably wants to spend. You know, this, basically what they're showing you here in this presentation here, if you go drive down Sutton Road or Rushton Road, that's what they've done on those roads. And those roads are in excellent condition because the county takes care of paying for those improvements. But I guess what he wanted to make clear and what I wanted to make clear to the board was it, it doesn't have to be each one of these sections. We can pick and choose and pull parts of these sections to try to get the most bang for our buck. I, and I guess I'll say, my biggest frustration is what you guys have just mentioned, where you know, we'll spend money and put money into a section of a road. And then next year, it's just as bad. And how do we get?
Yeah.
How do we get accountability from the road commission? That's been my frustration with the road commission for years.
So I can give you an example too, Bill, is on Six Mile. You made a comment on Six Mile, and I do see where they have by the links of Whitmore Lake Golf Course Garage. That whole section at one time, they put limestone in there all the way up to Nala Road. And right there where the, and I've lived here long enough that I remember when it happened that the road commission truck fell into the road. Uh, because we kept telling them it needed to be repaired. And they came and tried to repair it and it sunk in the road. So it's that same section. And I don't know if there is an underground, you know, stream that goes under there or what it is. But even this year, we had same problems in that same area where the road just gets really weird to where it turns to mud. And, and I don't know if any amount of limestone is going to fix that. I mean, they did draining, they did everything, and it's still a problem. So I don't know what's underneath. You know, we don't know what's underneath it that's causing it to do that. And then there is sections down by Lenore's that are, sorry, Lenore, but there are sections down by Lenore's house that are the same area, that has the same thing. Right before her house, there's a section right there that just, it doesn't, it had put limestone in there. And they've probably taken care of it several years. I think they've worked on it twice and it still does the same exam.
Ms. Otto, it's interesting that you mentioned that. I had a long conversation with Mr. Masti about that. Masti about that. Note recently about maybe he just didn't like us, as my neighbors were screaming at me and said, is it, they don't like you? So it has, it was, I was kind of like, I said, but yes, that is actually, it's, it's amazing. It's reoccurring. We do have a lot of trees, so that could be keeping the water, you know, the road damp, but. I think, if I may, Mr. Dignan. Last year, we did something that I actually don't think worked. And we actually tried to have them do some birmingham, you know, take out trees and stuff to me that I didn't see any result from that. So I would not suggest that. So I would suggest, again, the dust control. I would like to fix the Nala Road approach to Seven Mile. And then I'm thinking, Mr. Whit, if you could go and maybe some of the really bad areas, like you said, if we don't have to do the whole piece, maybe we could get a pricing on some of the really bad areas on Jennings Road, maybe even on Six Mile. Just to see if we might want to try that approach and see how that works. To get fixing some of the really bad areas. And then as Ms. Chick said, we usually do have some, some funding for limestone, just township wide. And I'm interested why that's not on the report, I guess, now that Ms. Chick had mentioned that.
Let me just put something into that. I, I think part of what they're showing is limestone in some of the sections, but it's for the whole section. And so I, I guess first, we probably need to know how much we want to put into it. And then I can take that and see how much we can get out of the county in the different sections that we feel like need to be addressed. Does that, I don't, does that make sense?
Yep. I mean, again, I think in the budget, I think, again, they usually match sixty-seven thousand. Or give us sixty-seven, and we usually at least do sixty-seven.
And we have a hundred and one proposed in the budget.
Yeah.
We spent, amended budget was a hundred and twenty-eight five for twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
So far, we spent a hundred and seventeen of it about. So. Ms. Chick.
Yeah, as far as how much we spend on the roads, I think we need to do at least what we did last year, if not more, if there's any money anywhere. Because that's a big deal around here. Our roads need help as much as we can get done. And I wouldn't, I think I would look to last year, what we did as far as the amount of limestone, because that seemed to work out pretty well this year. The amount that they put down, yeah.
Yeah. And where, when does this hit? Does this hit?
This would be next year.
Next year. So, you know, we, we, in the proposed budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we are keeping the same amount that we spent this year for roadwork and road improvements. The county drains was cut from forty-two down to fifteen. So, but as stated earlier, you know, that, that was not originally in our budget. A amended into the budget and, and was the actual activity of the township. So, and it doesn't. One board member reflected that it didn't seem to do a whole lot for us. So.
So last year we were.
Dollar amount for drains also was probably, now that I'm thinking about it, the drain work that was ended up being done over at Barker Road, too. I bet you that's in there.
Yep. I think so. We did.
That's why it was so much more.
I think it was on North Church. We had one on Six Mile and Barker. I think those were the three. And I don't know.
That's why the spending was.
Last year. Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Moko and then Ms. Zelenok.
Hey, hey, quiet down. Oh, I'm sorry about that. I'm, uh, two things.
Talking to us.
No, I'm sorry. My daughter just ran out here. I'm like, what is the timing? See, um, anyways, uh, two things, I, I just, I want to know when this is due. And then the budget, Ken answered that, I believe, with a hundred twenty-eight or a hundred one, somewhere around there. That budget, that budget doesn't fix a road around. I mean, let's just be honest. I mean, it throws a couple, a couple tons of rocks down and does dust control. And what puts a new culvert in somewhere. Uh, our roads are pretty bad. And I know the, the hot button topic right now is, is potential new PUD, but people need to reach out to the board, to us. And you know, I think the roads need a heck of a lot more attention around here. And I definitely don't want to sound like Gretchen Whitmer. So I won't say too much more about fixing the roads, but they're bad. We need, we need, we got, we gotta, we gotta look at putting more in the budget towards this. This is if we have a surplus, then I know it's been a challenging year with, with COVID. Nobody knew what the heck we were going to get, but we, we need to look it up, you know, moving the budget up a little bit for this. And it definitely won't happen if we hire a ton more people. This is my, my thing. But that's all I got. And I agree with Chief. It's, I, I don't want to say too much because I live on Jennings. And yeah, it's horrible. Thanks.
Mr. Moko, Ms. Chick, and then Ms. Zelenok. I'm sorry.
I have a quick comment. We need new revenue streams. We need, I, we've got to find new revenue streams. So that's the only thing that's going to help us as far as getting to the roads. But we need, our roads need attention. That's all.
Yeah. One, one note on that is, you know, unfortunately, when we look at the dollar amounts that are generated from a single mill in our township. And Ms. Zelenok, you may have that number. Do you know what one mill generates approximately?
I want to say like three hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah. So, so one mill, three hundred and twenty thousand takes care of one of these big projects, you know, the, I mean, I mean, you, you you know, their, their proposal is one point seven million dollars. And I realize that, and those are the areas that need work. So, but you know, it's, it's, this is a bigger, bigger issue than Northfield Township local. This is a statewide issue. It, 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 it can't be solved at our level entirely. We, we are the Band-Aid, unfortunately. And, and we, we just try to take care of the worst we possibly can. But you couldn't raise enough revenue to, to address our road problems that we have in Northfield Township. You know, that, it's, it's just a reality of it. And it's hard to, to deal with that because people want their roads fixed. They've been told for thirty years that this is going to fix the roads, that's going to fix the roads, you know, we've, if all the taxes that we're going to fix the roads were I don't know, seem to be put there, you build new ones. Ms. Otto.
So I did want to bring up, and I know that this was a part of it, we've had two emails in the last two, well, the last week in regards to road repair, one that is at the entrance of Eagle Garden. And I did drive down there and I thought, again, that when they did the East Shore road repair, that the entrances were taken care of, but evidently they weren't. That one is really, really in bad shape. I think all the entrances that come off of East Shore are, are in bad shape. And I don't know. I know the, the work that was done on East Shore came out of a different budget that came out of a state budget. It didn't come out of a county budget. So that's why the county was able to do that work. I don't know how we're going to address what wasn't addressed in the previous year.
Well, I, I will say this. And, and this is for everybody, public and all board members, see Click Fix. The app. And Washtenaw County Road Commission's on there. And literally, you see it, you take a picture of it, you send it to them. And, and if everybody submits the, 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 the big issues like that. I have actually, I follow all the things that are going on in Northfield Township with See Click Fixed. And they, they address them. They, they do what they can. They do come out and investigate. They do make fixes where they need to be made, those, those critical, you know, inroads and, and exits to neighborhoods. When there's a big hole or something, or there's a, it's completely degrading, the, the, the asphalt is just coming up. They, they do go out and do some work. I don't know what their criteria is and how that, that exactly works, but it's just called See Click Fix. And, and you can, you know, as, as members, you can sign up for your neighborhood roads. You can sign up for your township and know what's going on and know what's being reported. It's not just what you reported. It'll tell you if you want to, you can be notified of all the roads in the township that are being reported to the road commission. So it's, it's definitely a way, at least letting the road commission know where there's vital issues, you know, like a drain collapsing or something to that effect. I mean, that's, it's a big issue. But, you know, if a sewer drain or a a stormwater drain is collapsing in on itself, something like that, you report it and, and, you know. But it's just, you know, my thoughts, it's not, doesn't really have anything to do with our allocation and what we decide to do with it. But.
Ken, do you know if they will address tree issues as well?
Yeah, they do. Yep. So if you have a dead tree in the right of way, or you have a tree that's in the roadway, or anything to that effect, they do address those through that. Yes, Ms. Otto.
Yeah, I was going to also bring that up too. And thank you both for starting my brain. The, we did have a residence that, a resident that called this week and said that the work that the county did along the Horseshoe Drain and along the railroad track of cutting out those trees, they left all the dead cuttings down, and they're now going into the drain. So I did put a email out and hopefully that will get addressed.
Yep. It's kind of washed it all downstream now, but as the water level rose. So, yes, Ms. Zelenok.
So Ken, do you know the matching that's going to be done this year? It looks like over the last three years, it, with the drain and the road matching, it was around sixty-eight thousand.
Conventional matching is going to be fifty-five thousand, and then the drain match is, is thirteen eight. It, it is on the last page of their.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 you're fine.
So that's, that's what we have been, so I think we got to go to, there you go. Yep. So that's consistent. So I think we need to answer Mr. Wagner's question as how much do we want to spend? Last year was, the total cost was like a hundred and fifty-three thousand. The year before was a hundred ninety-seven, a hundred ninety-eight thousand. I'm just saying total cost. And then it was a hundred ninety-four thousand. So are we thinking we're going to do around the two hundred range or the hundred and fifty dollar, a hundred and fifty thousand range? Right now, I believe in the budget, it's pretty much.
Twenty-eight thousand for roadwork and fifty-eight thousand for road improvements.
Yep.
Eighty something.
So the roadwork is Brian applications.
Right. So I, I think, again, Wagner's, we want to keep it in the hundred and fifty thousand total range, which would put us a little over, you know, maybe eighty-five thousand in sharing, or do we want to go to the two hundred thousand dollar range or higher? So.
I'd be interested in putting as much as we can.
Okay. I, I mean, I think a good point would be to tell them that we want to do a total of maybe two hundred thousand with fifty-five thousand going to the dust control. And then if there's any projects. Um, and then if there's any projects that we want to do in particular.
Well, we've only put 28,000 to dust control previously.
Um, I think that's just because of the matching. So I, I, so yes, um, the matching, uh, while usually we allocate about 27,000 out of the, um, fifty-five thousand for dust control. So we usually do 27,000 with a matching of 27,000. So we use part of our matching control.
Okay.
So we, uh, yeah, that's typically what we've done in the past. So out of that 55, we use like 27 of it from dust control. That leaves us around 27,000.
So, so am I hearing 200,000 in projects of which 55,000?
Yeah.
Is dust control.
Yeah.
And twenty, twenty-seven thousand of that is matching from.
Right. So I'm just giving you right now, I don't know what the easiest part to work is, is just the total expenditures. That we'd like to totally spend maybe 200,000 with 55 going to dust control and, you know, we didn't really talk about the matching, but that would be including the township and their matching, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think I know what you're saying. Two, 200,000 total.
Yep.
And we'll try to utilize all of their matching.
Yeah. And then we'll go over.
Well, and we'll do the, the fifty-three thousand in dust control or whatever.
Yeah. So basically I think if we kind of take that approach, we'd probably go over the matching by like a hundred and thirty thousand thereabouts. That makes sense.
I, I get that.
Okay. That depends on how.
Yep. Well, we'll take the 27,000 of the matching for the dust control out and then,
Right.
then I'll figure out how much we have in project work, so to speak.
Yeah, correct. Probably you're going to have somewhere around 40,000 for project work for matching side of it. And then we'll go above that. You and I can talk if you want to a little bit.
Yeah, I'll probably want to confirm that.
So as those budgets stands, if we did that, as a proposed budget for 2021, 2022 stands, that would take 31,000 out of fund balance.
Correct.
We'd be spending 31,000 additional dollars out of fund balance.
Yeah.
And, and I would, I would add to that whatever we, whatever I come up with, I'll probably keep like 20,000 back in a contingency kind of thing and then have that to work on issues that come up in the middle of the year that we weren't expecting. And I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah. Yeah. And a lot of times as Ms., yeah. And a lot of times as Ms. Chick said, we've done like limestone township, you know, left it for limestone and stuff like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And the question is, do we want to do more? I'm just proposing 200,000. Do we want to do more than that? It's typically has been like the highest we have done over the last, like, six, seven years is 2,000, 200,000 rather, 2,000. The highest we've kind of gone.
Ms. Zelenek, would you like to propose that as a motion?
Oh, a motion that we spend in total $200,000 on road improvements?
For 2021, 2022?
Um, well, from a town, uh, how do you want me to do that? Do you want me to do it from a township perspective or from a, um, how about if we do? We.
Well, it's a, it's a hundred and thirty-two thousand of our money, 68 of theirs.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. Then we spend, that'll be the motion that, our motion is that we spend 132,000 of township money with approximately 68,000 of road commission matching.
I'll support that.
Motion by Zelenek, supported by Chick. Discussion, Mr. Moco?
I just want, I just would love to know if we have a, a surplus this year or if we're getting some, uh, money from stimulus, uh, you know, if, but at, at this point, it doesn't matter. There's, there's next year. So, yep. Bob, go ahead.
Sure. We will be getting stimulus dollars, but those are going to come to us when they get to us and we'll have to figure out what we can and can't use them for. Mr. Wagner?
I, I think, I think the important thing here is to make sure that we get the utilization of their matching funds. I think in the middle of the year, if we come up with money and we want to spend it, I think, I think the county will find a way to spend that money. But I think, I think the goal here is to try to use their matching money that they're offering.
Can we offer it to them then as matching money? If they match it, we'll spend it on roads?
We can try that.
Why not? Right? We'll spend another hundred if you will, right? I mean.
I like that.
Or even 50 cents on the dollar. I mean, something, right? All right. There's a motion on the floor with support. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep. Sorry. Check.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Zelenek.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Dignan?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Like to make a motion, a meeting, uh, be extended till no later than 11:30 PM.
Or.
Motion by Digna, supported by Nelson. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, uh, Ms. Manley will call the roll.
I, I got, I got something on that.
Mr. Moco?
We, we can't end it early. If, if there's people that have been waiting that we didn't let talk in the first half, I, I, it's, it's only fair to them.
Oh yeah, we can't end call to the public. I mean, if we get to call.
I just, just, just wanted to make sure. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, through our business I'm talking about. Yeah.
Good with it. We carry on.
Yeah, no question. Yeah, we can't do that. Just, this is just on our business. So, I mean, I think we'll move quicker than that, but. All right, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Otto?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Check. Yes. Zelenek?
No.
A six one.
So much I want to spend to midnight.
Aw.
Retired, Lenore.
Well, the next item on the agenda is the MERS.
There's an advantage.
The MERS contract. Uh, the only question that came up on this was whether or not the elected officials, uh, wanted to opt in this year. Um, if not, uh, we can execute the contract as is and go forward. Uh, if they do, uh, we'd have to check a certain box and submit it and then all the elected officials are required to participate and it takes the portion and the match and puts it into the MERS retirement. So, um.
I make a motion that we keep the defined benefit plans as is.
Support. Motion by Zelenek, supported by Dignan. Any discussion? Manley, can you call the roll, please?
Yep. Check. Yes. Zelenek?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
All right. Seven zero.
The next item on the agenda, I put on the agenda, uh, I've been working, as you know, uh, doing the zoning or the ordinance enforcement stuff. And I've been working with Vidya very closely. After talking with Mariah and Vidya, it was recommended that, uh, in order for us to issue citations for violations, uh, it needs to be done by a designee of the board as the ordinance enforcement officer until the position is filled. The problem is, and, and Vidya is willing to issue those citations. Problem is Vidya cannot go to court for us. But Vidya is also not the one in the field collecting the, the information to provide to her in order to back that up. So Mariah said that in the meantime, if we were to end up having to go to court, that if we designated myself as the ordinance enforcement person until the position is filled, uh, I'm not asking for any pay or anything for that. I'm just simply, I would be the one that if something was to go to court, I would go, not Vidya. And then it's still defensible. So that was the, that was Mariah's recommendation. And Vidya concurred that she would be willing to issue the citations. So, uh, we've had quite a, quite a bit of activity. Including today. So, I mean, it's, it, there's, there's a lot going on and, uh, you know, it's, it's just one step at a time. So, uh, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Uh.
I'll probably make a, I'll make a motion to designate the supervisor as a township code enforcement officer for the purpose of issuing of violate, violation tickets until we get a code enforcement officer.
Ms., Ms. Elna, can I have you, uh, add township supervisor and zoning administrator?
Okay. Township supervisor and zoning administrator.
Okay. There's support.
I'll support.
Support by discussion. Ms. Chick?
Uh, yes. My understanding, and I could be wrong because it's been a while since I heard this, was that in order to issue a citation that you have to be an officer of the court and have some kind of certification. Is that correct?
Mariah is our officer of the court.
Okay, okay. And, and, um, okay. Uh, my other question is, that's a dangerous job. And it is, we, we had people threatened with guns before.
Yeah, I know.
Are you going to carry a sidearm?
I'm not going to comment on that question.
Okay, okay.
But, but, but I, people have been very friendly and, and I, I'm not going to put myself in a situation that's unsafe.
Well, that was my question is if, if we put you in this position, um, and something happens to you, is the township liable? I mean, I.
I think that's a question of it anytime someone's doing something.
He's an employee.
An employee, so.
Yeah. And my other question is, would it be better to have one of our police officers or Mr. Wagner, who has nothing to do on his plate, be doing this as opposed to a civilian?
I talked to Mr. Wagner, well, in regards to this, and, and it's not a good thing for the police to be doing code enforcement. It's, it's bad for the image. Mr. Wagner?
Can I just add that, uh, in the past, anytime one of the code enforcement officers was going to anything and, and, uh, Vidya as well, if, if they have a concern, we're, we're more than happy to send an officer with them. If they want them next to them, um, or just in the general area, we're, we're very happy to take care of that. If they feel threatened, we've done that in the past and we're happy to do it. So that.
Put anybody in danger. Yep.
Appreciate that. And, and like I said, people have been generally very, very easygoing and, and understanding. You know, you're always going to have knuckleheads, but, uh, yeah. If, if, if I was to be uncomfortable, I would leave the situation and engage with Mr. Wagner to, to address it appropriately. So.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. And Ms. Krishnan would simply executes the letter of violation and then actually issues the citation. So that, that's her role in it. She does not ever go out to the site. Mr. Moco?
I would, I would just say I would suggest that, um, the Ms. Krishna or whatever it was, um, Vidya or whoever's doing it, uh, I would like a monthly report like we get from fire and police. I would love a monthly report on code enforcement to see what, what's going on because I hate being blindsided by stuff. That, that's really it. I wouldn't expect it to come from you, Ken. You got enough on your plate, moonlighting as an enforcement officer now. So.
Well, there's, yeah. And, and they, they, that should be coming. We talked about that um, in, in a report format. Uh, it hadn't been happening, uh, since the code enforcement officer left, I guess. I don't know. Yeah, because, um.
Jim, Mr. Used to do it.
Him used to do it. Yeah. So, um, you know, and a lot of times it's just some silly stuff that ends up getting worked out, you know? The, or between homeowner or whatever, uh, the biggest, uh, challenge is the, uh, uh, commercial entities that are not adhering to our ordinances. So. All right. Are there any other questions on the motion? Yes, Mr. Nelson?
I, I just wanted to reach out and say like, uh, just second what Nate said, um, potentially a reporter, anything like that, or at least some update would be very helpful because again, I like seeing the data. I like seeing and hearing from people, what's going on. Whoever would be able to do that, I, it'd just be great to know what's going on.
Yep. And that report will come from Vidya. Yeah, she, she keeps track of it now and, uh, can report out on it. So.
Definitely awesome. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Manley, would you like to call the roll, please?
Yep. Check. Yes. Zelenek?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Moco?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is trustee and liaison reports. And the first report is supervisor's report, which I provided to you regards to, uh, just kind of an update on these from our last meeting, uh, that, uh, communicated to Ms. Starbuck, uh, a couple of the budget changes, um, checked with Mr. Wyland in regards to Pittsfield Township providing the other inspections and engineering, which they don't. My understanding is Mr. Duchene from Al Dante has with, has requested his refund and his, uh, that's been issued. And, uh, that's about it. So anyone have any questions on my report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
So, um, again, I would just like to remind that we are working, we'll be working on the taxes and that the newsletter information is due no later to the printer than on Thursday, June 17th. So get your articles ready. Um, settlements completed. It went really well. Getting our documentation was a huge benefit. So we are working on continuing to update our documentation. It has really been beneficial. It will be beneficial when this, um, hostess goes on maternity leave. And then I did add something in about the sales tax and I don't know if anybody has any other questions at this point. On anything? Then I'll go to the sales tax. I just want to remind people that when, sometimes when we're signing checks, we notice that on occasion there's sales tax included, that we are, being the township, we're tax exempt and our policy is not to reimburse people for sales tax. And going forward, I just really want to ensure that this policy is followed. And I would like to send out just this note that I have in the board packet to all the committee members and board members as well as employees to remind them we don't pay sales tax. And again, if you need to talk to Ms. Carlisle, she has a list of the vendors that we've already filed our tax exempt forms. And in addition, if we need to establish new vendors, we can do that.
So Lenore, you then, when you notice our sales tech, you just don't pay that portion of the invoice and let them know?
Um, pretty much. Um, correct. And then what we do is, so we've, through the last four years, we've made good progress. I mean, it doesn't, but then we will not pay that sales tax. We'll file the paperwork and, um, get the proper paperwork. So what we're seeing is now is some, um, again, committee members, I think, being new may not know about the process and have come through, which we have paid, um, the sales tax. But, um, we just want to reinforce that we don't do that as a policy.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Elna? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, uh, do you have anything on the clerk's report?
No, but in Senate Clerk's report, and I mean, there's nothing new and interesting going on, you know, payroll, sewer bills. You know, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
All right.
So that's it for now.
Ms. Chick, planning commissioner report?
Um, yeah, but put in the business that we've been handling. Like I said, um, we haven't been able to get a lot done without having the building official and the manager in place, but, they was, uh, on March 17th, we had scheduled two public hearings for Chestnut for the rezoning and for the PUD that they were proposing, but that had to be tabled because the notice, uh, the signage notice was incorrect. So we had to wait for that to go through. And then, um, I wanted to add that on April 7th, although this is the March report, that, uh, the, the rezoning failed, um, from Chestnut's request. Uh, but the, um, the, uh, Chestnut, um, proposal, we were sending the PUD to the board for approval that passed. And then again, as Mr. Gordon said earlier, um, there was a lot of, um, comments from the public about, uh, the public being notified about, um, comments from the public about, uh, the public being notified about, um, items as big as this ahead of time, even though we did notice what we were required to. And actually, we actually noticed an additional by putting sign up and we are not required to do that, but they were asking for more. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. And that sign that was put up on the property was actually put up something almost 30 days ahead. It was put up like the day after it was supposed to be up and that isn't it? Yeah. So it was up. Yep. Okay.
It got noticed, but it was too late. So.
Yep. I understand. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Chick? Ms. Otto?
Yeah, um, a couple of things, uh, for the Park and Rec, uh, we do have a, uh, disc golf course that is installed this spring. I did put a ma- uh, map in there. So everybody understands that it, the, the current map of where the disc golf course is going to be will cover the entire 23 acres. I didn't know if the board would want us just to focus on the 10 to 12 acres instead. Um, uh, and I'm not thinking that it's a big deal because it's probably not going to be developed for another year or, or two, uh, by the time we get to it. So, um, we figure just let them put it in and we'll work with it. These are removable, um, disc baskets. They can be moved around the park as much as they want. Uh, the other thing is, is that the community center, uh, the community, I put community center sign, it's the community garden sign, uh, was acquired back in, uh, December 8th. Uh, we did approve to have the community guard sign put up. Uh, the purchase of that sign will cost $96.40. So they didn't know if, um, that they, they will go ahead and, uh, they went ahead and, uh, they'll purchase the sign. It also needs a permit. So, um, I don't know if the board will waive that permit fee of a hundred dollars for Parks and Rec or if Parks and Rec will have to go ahead and pay that permit fee.
I thought if the township put up a sign, they didn't have to pay for a permit. That's what I've been told. That's why the park sign didn't have to be paid for.
It do not have.
I like paying yourself.
Yeah.
I know, but I think they were under the impression that they had to pay a permit fee. So I will let them know that.
I check on it.
DNR, uh, the DNR trust, uh, fund grant submission was done on April 2nd. Um, we did complete our grant on April 1st at 8:30 PM. But there was a glitch and, uh, thank you to Julie, uh, from McKenna and, uh, the DNR rep Andrea Stay, we were able to get our application accepted on April 2nd. And then also I wanted to bring to your attention, um, I was going to bring it, I forgot to bring it to this board meeting to get approval, but I will put it on the next, uh, board meeting. Uh, the community garden, uh, there were several things, um, items that they purchased for the community garden. Um, they have, uh, a budget of eight elevated galvanized beds. Seven, uh, sections of fencing, um, and then some fabric from Monards and then garden mix soil. Uh, the total cost, uh, to, um, to do these improvements to the community garden would be about 1,850. So I am going to put it on the budget, but I'm going to let everybody know that probably part of this has already been purchased.
I guess I, I have a question. I mean, this, this is, this seems insane that, that the Parks and Rec is coming back to us for $96 items and, 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 and they have a budget. They gave us a budget. They.
You know, they have a budget of 5,000.
And we approved the budget and they're executing their mission. And why is this board micromanaging a hundred dollar purchases for, uh, our, our committees? I mean, if we, if, if it's within budget and it's, and it's part of their, their operation, they should be able to do that just like anyone else in the township that is managing the budget. I mean, they manage their budget. They, they were the ones that proposed it. We told them the, the constraints within it and we approved it. They shouldn't, we shouldn't be having to look at these line item issues and go, oh yeah, well, yep, yep, you can, you can spend it on that. You can spend it on this. I mean, the, that's why we gave them a budget. So we didn't have to do this with every single purchase they make. I mean, that's my opinion. I mean, I, 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 I think it's crazy.
But I, I figure that this is the way that it was done. So I, I, I have moved forward with it.
Yes, Ms. Eleanor?
I agree with you, Mr. Dignan. I don't know why we, we call up the committees any different than we do, like ordering office, office supply. We get the bills. Now, by the time we get the bills, we get a paid bill, the office supplies have already been invoiced and paid for. And I think that, I think the same with the, um, it should go on a paid bill, just like we do any other bill. Cause they have a budget. Now, if they go beyond that budget, then I think obviously we would need to come to the board to get, um, approval before it's spent and to increase the budget. But I, I think we should treat it like we do other bills for other items. Again, let's take office supply.
Totally agree.
Ms. Carla goes and orders the office supplies and we, we don't tell her she can do it or she does it. She just does it. And I, and you know, I'd like to commend the Parks and Rec because they do a lot of volunteer work, um, to keep things going. They. The shelter, um, you know, fell down. Um, they're going to be fixing the North Village where people parked in the winter time. They're working, you know, hard on the community gardens. So I think they're a very, um, good asset. So I, I think we should give them a budget as we did and let them spend it as they see fit to improve the facilities. And then the other thing on the sign, my understanding of how we handled permits in the past, if I recall, if we have to pay, and it's Peter to pay Paul, it doesn't, again, it's a matter of what budget comes out. But if we have to pay an outside firm to do the inspection or handle the process, then we would charge the entity is what I recall. So if it involves McKenna or OHM or some other, um, building inspector, then we would charge that fee. So, but if it's handled internally without any external costs, then we would not charge that fee.
Okay.
That was what I recall.
All right, Ms. Chick?
Uh, two things. So we gave the township manager a budget of $5,000 to spend on basically what he thought we needed. And he didn't have to come and ask us. He would tell us, but he didn't come to ask us for, uh, how to spend that money. Um, and the second thing is, I know that we are, if the township puts up a sign, they do not have to have a permit. And the reason I know this, I just talked to Vidya about the signs regarding the signs that Mr. Dignan was talking about putting up at the fire station and at the park. Um, and she says that the township puts up a sign, there's no permit fee.
Correct. Okay. Well, in light of this conversation, I'd like to make a motion that the Parks and Recreation Board and Land Preservation Committee be permitted to spend the money that has been allocated to them in their budget, uh, in a way that is consistent with the budget they provided to the township board, during the budgeting process. Also, without coming back to the board for approval.
I still second that.
Motion by Diggins, supported by Moko. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Otto?
Yes.
Velenak?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Dignan?
Yes.
Moko?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, anything else, Ms. Otto?
Um, just one more thing, and I just wanted to be transparent about it. When we did the, um, resolution for the, um, the grant, uh, there was a mathematical error. Uh, we did make the request for 300,000. Uh, we did put in that we would come up with 90,000 as we did in our resolution, but the match was only at 23%. Part of the, um, the application allowed for a township labor application to be used to make up the difference. So, um, in order to, for us to equate to the 30% match, we would have to come up with $40,000, which means, um, my time would be used, Jennifer's time would be used, the, um, the, uh, supervisor's, uh, time would be used, anybody's time would be used in order to make up this 40,000. It doesn't mean that we have to actually give it, but it does mean that the labor is taken out of the township can be allocated for. So I did want to, uh, let everybody know that that is corrected in, uh, the submission to the grant.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. All right. Mr. Moko, I missed you on the ZBA report. I see there wasn't a meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, you didn't really miss anything. We're good. No meeting.
All right. Ms. Zelenok on the Land Preservation Committee report?
As a reminder, we're planning, we are, are having a spring hike on May 22nd. Uh, we're going to start advertising it soon. So you'll start see advertisement on it for April 15th. Coming out, um, we are working on a detailed budget and expect to have that ready for our next budget meeting in April. Um, we did change our September meeting from Monday, since it was a holiday, to September 13th. And we adopted to continue to have, um, electronic meetings until the end of the year or if something else changes. And then you have the information and, um, we did put the draft minute, um, as opposed to the approved minutes. So you will see the improvement. There was a change from the draft minutes. So you'll see them next, next month. The approved minutes. Any questions?
Seeing no questions, want to do announcements? There are no announcements. Next is call to the public. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board, I will call on you now. You have three minutes to address the board. Ms. Buzzy, I see that you're here. Let's see if I can give you permission to talk.
Yes, I think I unmuted, unmuted myself.
You unmuted yourself. Go right ahead.
Okay. So my name is Dr. Deborah Buzzy. I live on 3240 Five Mile Road in Northville Township. And I sat through this four hour meeting. I have concluded that the earlier public comments on the public's ability to make a comment on an important issue facing the township, even if they are not on this agenda, but on past agendas is correct. Limiting public input until the end of this meeting is to squash public input. We are limited to three minutes. We pay the taxes and should always have a voice. I agree with Ms. Eleanor. All future meetings after the pandemic should include Zoom to encourage all residents the opportunity to participate. Do not have the time to sit in a three to four hour meeting. And is the only way I know of a major zoning issue like Chestnut LLC proposal is to sign up for a newsletter. I find that amazing. This is a very big change that affects all residents, regardless of they live next to this property or live in the township. Why aren't there public meetings, Zoom meetings? I've lived here, like I said, 42 years. I remember many public meetings in the past when a major change to zoning has been proposed. There are many considerations, traffic, population density, our water table, sewage, et cetera. And in terms of the roads, which I listened to with bated breath, I will tell you Sutton Road and Five Mile Road have a lime cap put in by the Washington County Road Commission, and it's absolutely beautiful. No problems whatsoever. So I don't know what's going on in six mile a dollar, but the lime cap is the answer to your problems. Thank you for the time for me to at least express my voice.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the information on the lime cap. Appreciate that. Next is Francine Dolus. Ms. Dolus, uh, you are muted. If you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
We can hear you just fine. Go right ahead, please.
Me to speak. Um, I like Dr. Buzzy, um, before me, I hope I said her name correctly. Have been waiting for about four hours, four and a half hours to be able to speak with you, um, and follow the meeting very carefully. I would much prefer that residents be allowed to speak at the start of the meeting rather than having to listen to the entire meeting because otherwise then I might as well be on the board of trustees too and making the decisions with you. Um, and since I'm not, it seems like a pretty, um, while they're interesting topics and important, it seems tedious for me to have to sit three, four and a half hours of meeting for, for this. Okay. So that's my first point. Secondly, I would like to talk about, um, the planning commission meeting from April 7th to do with the Chestnut development on North Territorial and Whitmore Lake. Um, so I have some issues with the way that the meeting was held. And so I'm going to raise these issues with you and you can take it back to the planning commission. I also plan to bring it to the planning commission when I get a chance. So the planning commission voted to reject the rezoning, um, of that site to medium density. However, Ms. Mc, Ms. Connehy, and I'm not sure if I'm saying her name correctly, and I hope I'm not mangling it. Um, she stated at the meeting that this is not an impediment to the development going ahead that all it needs, and this statement needs clarification. Um, so I want to understand what that means and what she meant by that. Um, secondly, the developer was criticized in various ways for the density and the poor quality of the planned buildings. Um, as well as, and I'll use this word for word, the ticky tacky quality of the houses and the units. Um, he was very offended by this and he made comments to the effect that Northville Township was lucky that any developer would come along and want to develop something at that site, which I thought was offensive because I think Northville Township is a beautiful place. And I mean, I've only lived here 11 years, but I fallen in love with it. Um, and the plan is submitted by the developer was rejected. However, the planning commission voted to allow the developer a chance to revise that plan and to resubmit it to the planning committee. Okay, that's fine. However, Mr. Gustafson, prior to this vote, asked the committee, what exactly were they voting on? What were the revisions they were voting on to allow him to go forward, the, you know, the developer to go forward? And he was told that Ms. Connehy would provide the list, um, from the transcripts later. So they voted on a list of revisions that they didn't know what they were. Now that seems to me wrong. That's just not an appropriate way for a committee to, to approve anything. Okay. And my very last point and I'll stop is that residents must receive postcards about big changes like Chestnut or, um, the development of a dispensary on the corner. I mean, it's going to be on the corner right down from my house and I knew nothing about it until I listened in on the meeting. It's not that I'm against development or against having this, but I, I would like to have had a say in it and to know something about it before this. You know, for instance, if you're developing the downtown of Whitmore Lake, why isn't it downtown? Why is it out here in the middle of the boonies? Makes no sense to me, um, given the, the importance of developing downtown Whitmore Lake. Um, I thank you for allowing me to express my opinions and, um, for all of your hard work on the, uh, this board of trustees meeting. Thank you.
You missed all this. Appreciate your time. Okay. Hold on just a moment. Mr. Gordon, you've been allowed to talk. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
David Gordon, Helena Road. I'm very confused by the report that, uh, trustee Chick gave regarding the planning commission meeting because I was watching that entire meeting and at the end, after rejecting the, uh, rezoning that was requested, there was also a request for a PUD and four of the commissioners had serious issues such as they didn't believe that the development was up to par. They didn't believe it was in the right place. They didn't think it was, uh, think it was, uh, creative or, um, done well, and there were concerns about the water, the traffic studies. There were a dozen different conditions, so they passed the PUD with conditions. My understanding is that, and from what I heard, I just listened to the, a brief little snippet of the meeting, Chairman Roman said that they were passing this with the hopes that the conditions would be met and these conditions in the new plan would be brought back to the commission for review to make sure that they were, they were met. There's no, uh, well, and then I hear, uh, trustee Chick say that there's no time to send out a postcard or a letter to the residents to inform them this is happening, because you guys intend to see it on your 27th agenda of this month and, and vote for it. I don't even know how that's possible, that you would be in such a hurry to get this thing passed, that there's no time to inform the residents. I think we're supposed to be a participatory democracy, but if you don't know what's going on, how can you participate? So I understand that people should be more involved, I understand that they should get themselves on the internet mailing list, I've been on it for years, I understand that, but I don't know what's going on in Lansing, for instance, every day, I don't know what's going on in DC every single day, I don't get emails from them. Am I supposed to be sitting in on their meetings and listening, reading their minutes to figure that out? Um, no, I depend on the news to inform me about that. Well, we don't have that here. And it, it, it's just not right to have something of this magnitude move forward without the public being more informed. It's, uh, it's, 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 uh, it strikes of being insidious, actually. It's, it's like trying to speak something fast. This came up 20 years ago. The, the township was in an uproar about it, it went to a referendum. This is the same piece of property with the same density that's being asked for, and nobody knows about it at this time. You can't pretend that you've done a decent job. So that, those are my comments, and I certainly hope you do something about informing the public before you act on this. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, if there's anyone else from the public that would like to address the board, you can raise your hand at this time. Okay. Ms. Delaney, uh, let's see, hang on. There you are, Ms. Delaney, go ahead.
Good evening. I just would like to offer a counterpoint, that I don't think it's a responsibility of the board to spoon feed information to people, and that, in my experience, in my opinion, living here for 10 years, I know what's going on, because I make a point to know what's going on. If you don't know that there's a dispensary going on the corner of, um, North Territorial and Whitmore Lake Road, after two years of meetings and a referendum, I don't know, I don't know how you can communicate with people better. And once you start talking about sending out postcards, where does it stop and where does it start? What size projects? What's going to be the cutoff? I've worked as a consultant in a lot of different communities, and it's just, it, to me, it's just madness that there would even be a consideration. You guys are following the Zoning Enabling Act of 2006, you're doing a fine job, and I'd say keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Appreciate that. Okay, next, the agenda is Mr. Only. Go ahead, Mr. Only, address the board at this time.
Yes, Adam Only, uh, 9315 Lakewood Court. Uh, I'm just real disappointed in the selective enforcement of this first call to the public policy that's brought to everyone's attention this evening. Um, it, it, it hasn't been enforced up until this point. Um, great example would be the last meeting that Northern Trellis had representatives at, and they spoke at the call to public, and there wasn't a single thing on that agenda that had to do with marijuana businesses or Northern Trellis, and they were allowed to speak. This selective enforcement, now just bring it up because you didn't want to hear from people about Chestnut Development tonight, is, is unacceptable. Even your own board members think it's unacceptable, and you saying it's not a board decision, it's your decision, uh, you're just throwing your weight around.
Oh.
Uh, it's my call to the public right now, so please mute yourself. Other than that, uh, I think the board, uh, is, and the Planning Commission is doing everything they need. Um, it's a little disappointing that you have people who just think they're entitled to special treatment on notifications and, and what they get and don't get. Um, they want special treatment, but then when someone asks for something like a rezoning, they think it's unacceptable. So, um, like, like Ms. Delaney just said, I've lived here for, um, just over 10 years, I'm informed all the time, because I want to be informed, I want to know what's going on. It's, I don't have to dig deep, I go to the website, I find the agenda. At times I see the agenda or the packet before some of the board members, because I want to. So if you want the information, it's out there, it's available, you don't have to go digging for it. And Mr. Grinnell has been coming to either Planning Commissions or Board meetings for, uh, I, I would say approximately a year now, since he's first introduced himself and talked about this project. Um, I, I don't think that he needs to jump through special hoops, because we have entitled community members here.
Thank you, Mr. Only. One second here. If there's anyone else that would like to address the board at this time, you may do so by raising your hand. Seeing no other members of the public, their hand raised. To board member comments, is there anyone on the board that would like to make a comment? This time, Ms. Chick, and then Mr. Nelson.
So, because I was at that meeting, I want to straighten some things out, not only for the board members who did not watch it, but for the public that was there that sounds like they don't understand exactly what happened. Um, the rezoning was a request from Chestnut, uh, but they did not need it to move their project forward. They could still do their PUD on that piece of property based on the fact that it complies with the future land use map in the master plan. The, the rezoning was just to make, to, to get it to that, um, um, match the, the future ma- land use map, that's all. The, they didn't need it to move forward. It did fail, the rezoning did fail at the Planning Commission level four to three. It did not stop the PUD from going forward, and so the board sat, and, and that's another thing people aren't understanding, this is a PUD, it requires two phases. There's a preliminary phase and there's a final phase. In the preliminary phase, they come to the Planning Commission, they say, this is my proposal, it's really conceptual, it's the, um, the, um, first, what do you want to call it, first offering of, of what they have to do. They, they had engineering reports, they had a traffic study report, they've had, uh, the fire department, uh, they know that they have all these other agency approvals that they still have to go to, just like any other conditional use. It's never done at the first meeting, they have to get all the reports and all these approvals, so the list of conditions was in that packet, if somebody wants to take the time to look at the packet, the conditions were in there. And those are the ones that they have to work on before they come back, if the board approves the preliminary approval, they have to work on those conditions, just like the marijuana businesses did, and have them done at the final approval. And sometimes you can still approve with conditions at the final approval, but they have to meet those conditions in order to open up their facility. So it's a two-step process. Um, there were questions from the, uh, commissioners about the materials that were used. Um, we can, we can ask them to change standards, uh, some of the people didn't like the design, they don't have to like the design, uh, they can comment on it. We don't always like everything that someone brings to the Planning Commission at the first visit, uh, we can offer them, or we can make suggestions of, they have, we do have standards they have to follow, but as long as they meet those standards, whatever materials they're using, there, you, you can't say no. So, um, I mean, well, I guess commissioners can say no, but, uh, I, it's just, I feel that people aren't understanding, as far as the noticing, we can't notice people until we get the first, um, the, until the developer sends in their, um, requests for a change of rezoning or requests for a conditional use, or a PUD, uh, that's when the notice goes out. I mean, sending out anything beforehand doesn't mean anything, because he might not ever submit anything. So I, I don't know how to get around that. And, um, and we, actually, it was in front of the Planning Commission twice, if people were paying attention, the public hearing was scheduled, we had to cancel the public hearing, and then they had to come back again, and for the actual, uh, discussion, the, uh, actual public hearing, because we canceled it the first time. So now it'll come before the board, if it's on the 27th agenda, then it'll be on the 27th agenda. It is out there in the public, I know, uh, I've seen all these people that came and speak to it, uh, are actually looking at it, are talking about it on Facebook. Um, so it's online on many sites, there's information out there, uh, I just, I, I, I don't know that we could do much more, uh, next time, maybe we'll notice, send out postcards ahead of time if a development comes in, but nothing that happened at the Planning Commission was inappropriate or incorrect, and it will come before the board.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Uh, Mr. Nelson.
Um, I just noticed in the Q and A that, uh, there was a request for clarification on my abstaining earlier. I wasn't entirely sold on exactly what was going on, uh, with the planning consultant myself, and I, I, I didn't want to, I, I abstained simply because I did not want to be the one to tell the committee who mainly voted against that, um, to do or not to do anything. That was my reason for abstaining, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, Ms. Otto.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm not muted, I had to see if I was or not, thank you.
Gotcha.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on Francine Dolis. Um, it, it does appear that she, uh, it does not know, uh, that there are other dispensaries that are in our township. Uh, there were three licenses that were issued, this has been over a two and a half year process that the board has gone through. Um, there has also been one referendum to where, um, there was a vote of whether to have businesses, um, in our township. Uh, there are three dispensaries, one on Main Street, right across from the Township Public Safety Building, one downtown, and one, um, on North Territorial Whitmore Lake Road. There is also a large growth facility that will be on North Territorial Road in the industrial area. So, um, this has been going on for a long time. It, it has gotten a lot of, uh, lot of media, it has gotten a lot of, uh, uh, the public has been very much involved in this, um, so I just wanted to let her know that it is more than just one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Um, I do have a couple of comments, and then I'll go to Ms. Zelen- or, go ahead, Ms. Zelenok, I'll let you go ahead.
Um, first of all, thanks for everybody for staying late. I would like to see on the agenda the call to the public, because, um, as an agenda item to discuss, I do believe the first, I would like, and I think it's important, that the first call to the public is whatever the public would like to tell us, because I'm here to listen and I'm here to represent them, and I want to hear what they have to say. This is an opportunity for all of us to hear what they have to say, it gives them, um, and I'm, and I want to know. The other thing is, is I do think we need to use our website better as far as a communication tool. I do think, um, again, as I mentioned, the no burning ban should have been up there right away and come down and up. I do believe the Chestnut could have been, um, better, that it could have been utilized better by putting it on the website, not only to go into the Planning Commission, but that it's being discussed. Because it is, um, probably one of the biggest events, and I would think the biggest development in our township that's probably ever happened. So I think it's just good to inform the people and make it very easy, front page news, so to speak, that, um, it's really accessible and even easier than having to look at what's happening maybe at the Planning Commission or at the board. Those are my comments. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenok. Mr. Moko.
I'll make it quick, because it's getting late, uh, but I just want to thank everybody for their, all the residents, uh, for their input this week. I mean, we're all here to represent the public, like, exactly like Lenore said, and, uh, none of us are mind readers. Um, and, and our personal opinion shouldn't come into, to what the public wants, a- as far as, as far as new development or, or burn permits even, and, and I'm going to get with chief next week, or this week if I have time. I'd, I'd love to see our burn permits go on the website where you can register that without having to go to the what, to the township. I mean, if you can't get a burn permit, put it on the website, I agree. I think we should be able to also apply for them on the website. It's a huge pain in the butt, I, I burn brush almost every weekend. Uh, but anyways, besides that, thank you to the public, keep, keep your input coming, we need to hear it, and, uh, register for the township updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Ms. Manley?
Um, just thanks everybody for sticking with us, and again, yes, keep us posted on your thoughts and your ideas and what else you would like us to do. So, that's it, have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Manley. Um, Mr. Nelson, do you have any, did I already, did I already get you?
Yeah, you did.
I did, okay, all right. Uh, a couple of things, uh, I did take the time, uh, to watch the entire Planning Commission meeting the other night, uh, and, uh, just, uh, one thing that I did notice, and it wasn't brought up here, is the rezoning failed, but the rezoning was there to actually restrict the number of dwelling units that could go on there. So the, so actually, the rezoning failing actually uncapped the, uh, the potential PUD density, uh, rather than capping it. The, if the zoning would have passed, it would have capped the PUD density at no more than four dwelling units per acre. But because the rezoning didn't pass, the PUD could have, and it's not what Mr. Gronow had proposed, but my understanding from the planner was that the, uh, plan actually could go beyond four dwelling units per acre, the way that it's currently zoned with the current future land use map with where it's located at. So, um, I think that was a little misunderstanding on the part of the public, that the rezoning actually was, uh, to, to make it a, to, you know, to, to, to hamper that density and make it not be able to go beyond that. Uh, uh, so, uh, with that said, also, um, you know, the, uh, plan, uh, for that area, has been for, uh, a number of years at that density. At the same note, there's land just to the north of that that's at that same density. Uh, it's, you know, decisions, uh, have impacts, and community involvement, uh, is important. We've had, uh, you know, people involved in developing this master plan and putting it in place so that when developers come in, like Mr. Gronow, and I know, because I've had a lot of conversations with him in November and December and January, uh, we were very clear, do not bring a development to this township that is not compatible with the master plan. That's been word one, uh, is, if it's not compatible with the master plan, do not bring it here. There, there's been a commitment, and there was a, an ask on the part of the township, uh, uh, residents to say, I'll only allow development that is consistent with the master plan. That is exactly what this development was when it was brought to, or when, when he finally applied and put forth the proposal. It is compatible with the master plan, and I think some residents are finding it really inconvenient that the master plan that they have been the champions of and touting of, they, they had no idea what it says. Uh, this is something that is, you know, very important. There's a reason that it's the framework, and it's the reason that when things like this come to us, if we're going to say we want to stick to our master plan, we have to stick to our master plan. And that means allowing things where things are allowed, or you cannot defend it and stop things where things are not allowed. So if you don't allow the things that are allowed where they are allowed, then when someone comes and wants to do something elsewhere, you are not able to defend that, because you did not stick to your master plan. So, uh, it's been very important that we communicate that. Uh, you know, I, as one individual board member, made a commitment that if someone- You know, I, as one individual board member, made a commitment that if someone comes in and they have a plan that is not consistent, we will tell them either become consistent with the master plan or leave. And that's, that's, that's how I've addressed things when I've talked to people. And I think it's very important that the public understand that there has not been anything but very clear and precise communication that work with our planner and make it compatible. You know, if if you got a reduced density, reduce density. Whatever you, you know, if you want to come forth here, it's going to be in line with our master plan. So uh, those were my thoughts and my takes from that Planning Commission meeting. Uh, and I look forward to uh, vetting out the project and and considering it uh, in our future. So with that, I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eleven fifty two.
Motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to add one thing to Ken's comments that that master plan for that zoning for that area has been in that master plan for eleven years. And that plan that was done in two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve had the most participation of any master plan or anything like it before that or since. So there was a lot of public input in there, and that rezoning or that zoning, I'm sorry, was in there at that time, and everybody was happy with it. So uh, and and again, I'm disappointed, actually, that the planning commissioners, they were told twice that if they rezoned it, they could put a cap on a number of units, and they didn't do that. So now it's kind of wide open. That's all.
I still have my motion to adjourn. I support.
All right. All all those in favor, say hi. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Bye.